Welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting. Prior to the start of our meeting, tonight we have a special presentation at Small Business Week, and Terry Borbick is going to quickly step up, introduce some people, and tell us what's going on this week, and I've got a proclamation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Terry Borbick. I'm with the City of Des Moines Office Economic Development, and the proclamation is for next week. It's the U.S. Small Business Administration Small Business Week. We have here a few guests. Joe Folsom, who is the District Director of the U.S. Small Business Administration located here in Des Moines. Kathy Koenig, who is the President of the Corporation for Economic Development in Des Moines. Amelia Lobo is with the ISED Women's Resource Center.
I live with ISED.
With ISED as well. So, can you do like Small Business Week?
Yeah, thank you, Terry. Every year since 1953, U.S. Small Business Administration has celebrated National Small Business Week, which this year is actually this coming week. And what's really unique this year is we're actually taking that celebration on the road, and so we have regional events scheduled all the way from Seattle to Dallas. Actually, the closest one here is St. Louis on Thursday of next week, excuse me, Wednesday of next week, and then wrapping up in DC on Friday, where we're presenting awards to all of our National Small Business Week winners. I'd just like to extend appreciation to the city for all the great work it does on behalf of its small businesses and entrepreneurs in its committee, with great partners, and we look forward to continuing that work.
I would also like to invite everybody. The Corporation for Economic Development in Des Moines is a certified development company certified by the U.S. Small Business Administration to help small businesses within the city of Des Moines expand. It's having its 32nd or 33rd, 32nd Annual Meeting next week down at Chuck lottery Stom's new production facility at 2901 Bell Avenue. That'll be an opportunity. Hopefully, some of you folks have tried Chuck lottery Stom. It's a small business that the corporation has assisted in expansion several different times, and there will be free samples of their delicious products at their new manufacturing facility at Bell Avenue. So, that starts at 4:00 on Tuesday, June 18th, so everybody's invited to that. Amelia, you wanted to say something about the ISED Women's Resource Center?
Thank you. First of all, thank you very much, Mayor, County, and City Council for your recognition of the importance of small businesses to our community. ISED Ventures for 25 years has provided training and counseling for small businesses in the Des Moines area. In the last five years, we've worked with over 1,400 small businesses. Eighty percent of our small businesses that we've worked with are women-owned small businesses. Over 70% have been women of color, and 65% have been low and very low income. We take this work very seriously, and we believe that small businesses are a great engine of economic development here in the city of Des Moines and throughout Iowa. We know, for example, that according to the Association for Enterprise Opportunity, if every small business in the United States hired a single employee, we would be at full employment. And I think that just underscores the importance of small businesses, and for your support of small businesses here in Des Moines, thank you. And we are located at the United Way Building if any of you would like some help with your small business. Thank you.
I've got the proclamation. I do want to thank everybody for working for small businesses, having some experience in that area myself, and thinking of all the years and looking at all the places around the city of Des Moines, and knowing that the more we buy local and the more it supports our local community and all the people at work here in Lubbock. So, having said that, our proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Iowa's small businesses are the foundation of our free enterprise system representing opportunity, independence, and the fulfillment of the entrepreneurial dreams of generations of Iowans, and whereas small business plays a pivotal role in shaping the future of Iowa and the nation by serving as the foundation and engine of growth for a healthy and prosperous economy, and whereas the 26 million small businesses in the United States, including the more than 257,000 small businesses in Iowa, create two-thirds of all the new jobs, lead in innovation, and are the model of private initiative, and whereas the business owners of the state of Iowa and throughout the nation have taken a lead role in economic and civic affairs and will continue to play an important role in the future of our state and our nation with unparalleled accomplishments and contributions. Now, therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council, do proclaim the week of June 16th to the 22nd, 2013, a Small Business Week, and urge all of our citizens to join in saluting our city's business people by observing this week with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and locally business. So, if you guys will all step over here, we'll take a quick photo, and if we can, let's give them all a hand. This is... Good? Thank you. We'll start in just a moment.
You can do it at the table. Say it when he goes through the wrench, wrench. Does it wet? Not anymore. It'll show up in the minutes, though.
All right. I want to welcome everybody to our June 10, Des Moines City Council meeting. Prior to the start of this evening's meeting, we're going to have a word from our own council member, Chris Coleman, and for those who would like to stand with us, we'd ask that you do so at this time.
Tonight, I'm going to share the prayer for government leaders. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through you, authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit of counsel and fortitude, the President of the United States, our representatives in Washington and here at our state Capitol, other honorable local government leaders, and especially the city council and the public servants of Des Moines. May we always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. May our concern always be for people. Grant that we may be enabled by your powerful protection to lead our city, our community, and country with honesty and integrity. We ask this humbly and with gratitude for all the opportunities you have given us. Amen.
All right. We're going to call this meeting order, and I'm going to ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Grease?
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. There are a couple of corrections on the consent items. Item 4A was withdrawn. The inspections are incomplete. Item 11C was added, accepting the work completed in construction. Final payment for Crawford Creek watershed improvements, East Gray Street to Southeast 9th, Genco Construction. Item 15I was added, a recommendation from council member Bob Mahaffey to appoint Carolyn Rogers to the Park and Recreation Board, seat 9, for a three-year term commencing June 10, 2010 to expire June 10, 2014. Item 26 was corrected, amended City Council Communication Number 13-298. Item 41A was added, a final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the Community Development Department and requires six votes. I will also note that regular agenda items 42 to 55, 47 is corrected, and to continue to June 24 at 5:00 p.m. 47 A and B withdrawn. 47 C was withdrawn, and 55 is corrected to read through June 30, 2015, with one-year renewal options, subject to conditions. And there is one extra item that I am adding, to appoint Joanne Muldoon to the DART Commission. Other than that, does anybody have anything else? If not, could we have a motion? It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Items and corrections have been approved. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 41. These are all routine items, and they're enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless somebody either from the audience or the council table up here asks for discussion or clarification of any of the items. This evening, item 5, council members, County, and Moore vote no. Item 18, council member Coleman wishes to speak. Item 40, council member Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items? Anybody would like to pull for additional discussion or clarification? Again, those are items 3 through 41. Seeing none, could we have a motion for the balance, please?
Move.
Items 3 through 41 have been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. That takes us to item 42. Well, actually, I guess we'll go back and have item 18, and have, as soon as I get to it. Item 18 is on the vacation and conveyance of a portion of the North, South, and East-West Alley right-of-way adjoining 501 Grand Avenue to Polk County for $1. Its scheduled date of hearing is 6/24/13. Council member Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make a motion to approve this with some comment to the city manager. By way of background, this is an alley that is right now associated with the convention complex at Fifth and Grand, and so while we're contemplating selling this to Polk County, it will ultimately be used by the YMCA. Normally, when we sell alleys, we sell them at fair market value, have to do some sort of appraisal, and sell them that way. There's an exception to that that allows us to sell it to another entity for a dollar in certain circumstances, and that's what the manager is recommending as part of the overall effort to support this YMCA. Let me say that I'm very supportive of the Y plan. I'm appreciative of Polk County taking the lead and making this happen. I think it's really good for the community, and I want to be supportive. I also know that the taxpayers of Des Moines own this alley, and it has some value, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. And I'd like to think that there is, in some way, as this project unfolds, that we can get some other, maybe it's an intangible, maybe it's support for another project, that there's something that we can do to gain some value out of that, that has enough value that the council feels good about it. We represent the taxpayers. It's their asset, and I think there's something that we can do creatively with Polk County that gives us both the recognition for contributing several hundred thousand dollars towards this project, but also compensates the people of Des Moines in some way. It's a nonprofit, the Y. They don't have deep pockets. They're already trying to raise a lot of money, so I'm not trying to look for that value monetarily, but maybe there's some creative way manager that you can make that happen. The other thing that we have seen happen is that we've deeded alleys over for a particular use to be supportive of that cause, and for one reason or other, that doesn't happen, but that property becomes very valuable. There's been cases then that the city wanted to go back and buy or obtain that, and it's become much more costly. So, maybe one thing that we can consider is a reversion clause or something, that if the project doesn't happen the way it's supposed to, that we haven't sold that alley for a dollar when maybe it's worth several hundred thousand. So, I know this comes back to us eventually. Is that right?
Mr. Coleman, you're setting date of hearing, so it has to come back as a hearing.
Yeah. So, if you could consider those and work with, you know, Polk County, especially the Y, who's the ultimate recipient, I'd be happy to work on that as well, but I think the taxpayers can get some measure of satisfaction from this transaction, more than the $1.
Any other discussion? Items have been moved.
Seven yes?
All right. Takes us to item 40. Item 40 is an ordinance, a second consideration on the rezoning of 3911 and 3915 Southwest 9th Street from R-160, one-family, low-density residential to limited C1 neighborhood retail commercial, subject to conditions, Council Communication Number 13-287. Council member Moore.
Mayor, I pulled this because at the last meeting, there were numerous people that lived in the vicinity that seemed to have some concerns. There was a neighborhood meeting that both those people, the staff and the developer, met in, but it's unclear as to whether or not those residents were satisfied, and I just wanted, if any of them are here, give them the opportunity. I'd like to know if they were satisfied at that meeting or not.
Not, not... Is there any staff report, Ms. Manager, or...
There is. I think Mr. Ludwig would be happy to come in if you'd like.
That's fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. In your packet, there was a summary of the meeting that we did have. There were representatives of both the seller, the applicant on the rezoning, staff, and I believe the three neighbors that attended the meeting. There were a lot of questions asked at that meeting, and we didn't have answers to everything, so it was hard to say we had agreement walking out of the meeting without providing additional information. We did let them know that the blue letter would be released, which was released last Friday. I provided a copy of that. I believe there's one person here, at least, that was at that meeting. I can't speak to whether they are satisfied with the resolution. I do know that one of the concerns they did express was about the timing of the traffic signal at Southwest 9th and Watchers, and we said that we would do additional, take an additional look at that timing. And on Friday, I did receive an email from the Traffic and Transportation Department that they actually did make some adjustments to the timing of the traffic signal, reducing the yellow portion of the signal timing and increasing the all-red portion of the signal timing, which is the timing that all four directions are stopped, and that was basically to, one, reduce the opportunity for people to try and beat the yellow light on Southwest 9th or Watchers, and then also to allow additional time for the intersection to clear before any additional movements were allowed through the intersection. So, those adjustments, I believe, were made on Friday, and, you know, you're talking about fractions of a second, so I don't know if those have really had an opportunity to even be noticed or would be noticed, but they were looked at, and those changes were made. So, we listened to the concerns. I think the applicant listened to their concerns and addressed those from staff standpoint. That is why we are recommending approval of the rezoning as was recommended by Planning Commission. Thank you.
And can I just add, Skip? We did, I did receive a letter and forwarded it, or an email, and just forwarded it earlier today to Mike. The Watchers South Neighborhood Association, the board, did take action on this. There was, they voted with all of them saying yes to move forward, even though they noted that it was technically not in their neighborhood, but they knew that it was very close.
I believe there's one gentleman in the audience that attended the meeting. Were you satisfied? You? Yeah.
I'm Richard Coon. I live at Southwest 7th and Waters. Another option would be, they have some vacant spots at Southwest 9th and, I'm sorry, Southwest 9th and McKinley. That could be another possibility, you know, put business in there. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments on item 40 regarding the 3911 and 3915 Southwest 9th Street rezoning?
If there's no further comments, I'll move 40 and 48.
Did you have a comment, sir?
Just one comment.
All right. If anybody else has a comment they would like to make on this item, because we almost got a motion there, which would have kind of shut this down, we kind of have to have an idea who's going to speak. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Craig Bergman from 1115 Watchers. I live just a block west of the location there, and it's already a commercial corridor. We have a bank, we have a gas station. If we're going to have livable, walkable communities, a little family grocery store kind of thing, it'd be a perfect thing to have, so thank you very kindly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. All right. Mr. Meyer, I want to go ahead and repeat your motion, please.
Sure. Motion's to move 40 and 48.
Motion to move 40 and 40A. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Seven yes?
Seven yes. Item 41 is on the rezoning of 1135 Army Post Road from R-160, one-family, low-density residential to C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above, and actually, we don't need to do that one. We've already voted on that one. That completes the consent agenda, actually. Takes us to 42. Sorry. Ordinance on the first consideration of amending Chapter 114 of municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council Communication Number 13-291. A is Beaver and Aurora traffic signals. B is 44th Street parking restriction revisions north of College Avenue, and C is Southwest 5th and Virginia reversal of stop signs. Is there anyone here to comment on 42A, B, or C? Anybody?
I'll move this item if there's no discussion.
Item's been moved.
Seven yes?
All right. Item 43. Item 43 is from Rita Mulan of 1310 7th Street to speak regarding a house for boarding of Des Moines homeless. Is Rita here? Okay.
Rita, we're on your item.
You're up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rita Mulan, and I'd like to make the city council a proposition to help the homeless people in this town that I've got to meet. I'd like to have a house for them. It's really, really bad up in the hood area around by the Catholic Worker House, and there are people come to me, and they ask me to help them. I worked for a social psychologist when I was in Los Angeles, and he worked out of the VA Hospital in Beverly Hills, and I ran two of his homes in Watts for him. And while I was there, the man who had ran the place beforehand, they had beaten him up so bad that they were surprised you lived for the conditions that they were taking care of. I also, when I was in Los Angeles, got to stay in a house in Watts for a short period of time, and it was an African-American house. And within a month, they had made me president of the house. This can all be documented. I couldn't understand why, but, you know, hey, life goes on. I stayed at the West Lake Hotel, which is in the Everado area, when I first came here there, and I was the maintenance manager... here there. And I was the maintenance manager. They gave me a place to live, and I did the maintenance work for them. And that was up in the area where Harry Chapman used to live, the old actor. It might not have been Harry, but I forget right this moment. But anyway, while I was there, there was four other families that abandoned their children to me. And from the ages of four months to, the oldest was four years old, three little girls and two, and a baby boy and an older boy. And I took care of these children, and I got to see the devastation of LA. I also got a job working for the, at that period of time, the Broadway Company out there on Mission Road where the, anyway, they wanted to make me a food production manager in training. And I did it. I did it for a while, but, you know, I couldn't support these children on what little money they were paying me at the time. I ended up coming to, I went to Eureka, I was in California, and I was doing volunteer work at a mission. I had a camper at that time, mobile home. And this family from Cedar Rapids asked me if I would pull their camper out because their time was up. They had three little small children. The oldest was six and the youngest was two. And I went to my camper that night and lied down, and I said, "Okay, God, if you want me to do this, you better give me one hell of a vision." And he showed me the death of the children. So I ended up coming here for a month to Cedar Rapids. I took care of those children from the time they were two years old, the youngest one, until the last time I saw the oldest boy, he was twenty. And I got to see why the children had problems. When they stayed with me, there was no psychiatric medication. The boy at eight years old turned around to me and he said, "I don't know why my sister, she was five, has to take only five milligrams of medication, and I gotta take eight." And I told him, I said, "It's because of what you've had to go through and what you've had to see and experience." And this is here, I knew nothing of Iowa, knew nothing. I knew it existed, you know, but other than that, you know, I was here for a month. It's been seventeen years. I got a job working for the City of Des Moines. John Morrow was the man who was my direct supervisor at that time at Polk County Convention Complex. I answered to no one but John Morrow, and I ran his maintenance department there for him until Wells Fargo took over. And these children came back and forth and stayed with me. I had a mobile home in back of J&amp;J Auto Sales on Euclid Avenue. And to protect myself, I got a foster parenting license, not to ask the government for anything, but just to protect myself from taking in children. And, okay, my supervisor on the night shift said to me, the place where I was staying was also, the Old World Flea Market was there, right next to J&amp;J, and I was camped up there initially, and the man lost his land. And my supervisor at Polk County said, "If you will go to church on Sunday, you can come and stay at my mother's house in back, plug in, on Fifth and Forest." And I did, and I started going to his church. He told me he was a preacher. He took in foster children. And so, hey, you know, on with the show, right? So I went and stayed there.
Rita, could we ask you to kind of wind it up here?
Get out of here. Get out. Okay, okay, I got it, man. So what I want to do is, there's some people that really need help. There's a few of us. In the house, there would be no alcohol. There would be no drinking. There would be no drugs. There would be no, at least, no sex between men and women unless they were married. People who really want to get themselves together and be productive members of society with, you know, they have to want it. And I've got people here that want to.
We've got Doug Romig and Chris Johansson. Are you guys here? Can I, put your hands up. Doug, I'm going to ask you if you could spend a minute with Rita and kind of talk to her, maybe about what her plan is, and give her some path, maybe, to proceed with some of your thoughts. I think it's a great opportunity, at least certainly for initial discussion, and it sounds like you have a passion for homeless and hungry people and people in need, and we're certainly thankful that you're here to bring some ideas forward. So if somebody would give me a motion to receive and file her comments, and then, Doug, if you could kind of talk with Rita a little minute and give her some ideas.
Thank you, sir.
So moved. Rita, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
It's been moved.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, okay. Let's move on to item fifty-five, administrative service-only agreement with Delta Dental of Iowa, Jeff Russell, President and CEO, to provide administration of the employee and retiree dental insurance plan for July one, two thousand thirteen, through June thirty, two thousand fifteen, with a one-year renewal option. Subject conditions, council communication number thirteen dash two eighty-four. Is there anyone here to make comment on that update?
I'll move fifty-five.
All right, fifty-five's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. The extra item that I mentioned a few moments ago is to fill the vacancy on the DART Commission and with Joanne Muldoon. If we could have a motion?
I'm happy to move the appointment of Joanne Muldoon to the DART Board.
All right, probably ought to get a vote on that one.
Six yes.
All right. We have a quick motion to recess as Des Moines City Council and reconvene as Board of Health.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. We'll bring our first item forward. It's authorizing the legal department to proceed with court action, seeking authority to abate the public nuisance of forty-one forty-six East Thirty-first Street, which is a fire-damaged structure, main structure and garage. Its title holder is Ann Hendricks, and the mortgage holder is Mortgage Electronic Registration Systems, Inc. Is there anyone here to speak to this item on the Board of Health authorizing to proceed, the authority to abate the nuisance? Seeing none, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Could we have a motion to adjourn as Board of Health and reconvene as Des Moines City Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now sit as Des Moines City Council. Mr. Attorney, can we at least read that first item and begin taking some testimony on it? There may be a couple of people that want to speak.
You can read the item, cannot begin taking testimony.
Okay. That concludes our agenda prior to the hearings. Our first hearing item is item number forty-four. And item forty-four is on the vacation of three segments of street right-of-way for the railroad crossing closures at the Hull Avenue, Scott Avenue, and southeast Thirty-fourth Street closings, or crossings. Council Communication Number thirteen dash three hundred, A is the first consideration of the consideration of this ordinance above. Can we have staff make a couple of comments?
Not to be considered part of the hearing.
So we'll wait thirty seconds.
Yes, sir.
Going to wait thirty seconds. Glad you all could be here this evening. Nice weather out, no rain. Yeah. I would ask that anybody that intends to speak this evening, that we would ask you to begin lining up over on the south side of our council chamber here. In our intent, obviously, since we've discussed this a couple of times before, we want to get all information and new information principally as a matter of record. If there's a number of people that are going to speak on the same item, we would ask you to acknowledge that and please stick to your individual piece. We would probably prefer not to have repetition of the same argument overly repeated. So at the moment, it looks like we've got staff, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Are you going to speak? Fifteen, fourteen. Okay. Council, before we get started, it looks like we have a number of speakers this evening. What's your pleasure? Three minutes, please, five minutes? I mean, there ought to be maybe a couple of people that want to round out a larger picture of an issue, but if we could stick mostly to three?
Three.
Okay. And then if anybody has anything specific, why you might ask for another minute or so. Should we start with Ms. Manager's staff?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Delafield?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Phil Delafield, Community Development Department. I'm sort of serving as the master of ceremonies here this evening. We have several pieces of information to present to you, remind you of the staff role in this process. We're helping to formulate the dialogue, to give you the best available information that we have in order for you to make an objective decision on this proposal. So our role has been to formulate an objective analysis of the details of this proposal, and we're running through that again yet tonight. This process includes a significant effort so far on the part of many people, the public, city staff, the railroad, city council, a whole series of meetings, many points of discussion, many complex points of discussion. Where we are right now is a brief overview of the project as it stands today. Tonight will be first reading of the ordinance. The goal of this is to reach an agreement which would be a condition of the final reading. In the agreement, the preliminary terms of the agreement that we've discussed prior include those points of not only the rail closure, but the improvements that the railroad has agreed to participate in should this approval come to pass. There are also some issues with a sidewalk alternate for the landscaping in the Hull Avenue area, the community planning participation, if that is an element of this, and also the emergency road and any alternates that might be necessary. The three pieces that you're going to hear tonight are a more in-depth discussion on the viaduct analysis, the traffic model, and the economic impact analysis that you have previously asked for. This evening, I'm going to ask each of the experts in this area to step forward and give their piece. So beginning with the viaduct analysis, I believe Jeb Brewer will present that portion.
Good evening, members of council, Jeb Brewer, City Engineer. Council had asked that we look at, in a planning sense, to see about what would be the opportunities to build a viaduct of Hull Avenue over the railroad tracks. This graphic here just sort of represents the existing viaducts or underpasses over the railroad on the east side of the river, Euclid, Guthrie, of course, I-235, University goes under the tracks, East Fourteenth, a viaduct, and East Thirty-first Street, just also as a point of reference. The southeast connector project, which is before council tonight, hearing on the ward, does include a viaduct or overpass over the railroad near Scott Avenue. The question being, what would it look like or planning if we were to construct a viaduct for Hull Avenue? This is just a preliminary graphic. Just to point out, down here on the bottom part is the planned view showing the beginning and the end of the viaduct. The yellow portions here would be, as the road starts to rise up, these would be on fill, earth, fill. The red portion would actually be structure, and then it comes back down, and then back here on the yellow would be earth and fill again. The top parts is profiled. The profile's been stretched, so the vertical axis is in a different proportion than the horizontal, so it's easier to see. If they were both at the same scale, it would be difficult to tell the details. Obviously, the purpose of a viaduct is to get the roadway above the trains, and so there's minimum requirements of how high those have to be. These trains, obviously, are stretched out. That's just really the graphic, so you can see it easier. But then you've got also have the depth of the viaduct, would be the beams and the structure, so you have to account for that. On viaducts, essentially, how fast you raise up and how fast you come down, there are some design standards on that. This one's just been laid out at five percent. Need to not only account for car traffic, but also pedestrian traffic. As we come over here, one of the unique things about this is we can't come down fast enough in order to make connection here at Delaware, so the decision, and again, this is just planning, this isn't a design, this is a concept, would be to keep the viaduct elevated over Delaware so that you could keep that road open and wouldn't have to close it, since it does provide circulation over here on the east side. As you come back down, you know, some preliminary planning, you wouldn't be able to make the connection here with the street, so you may have to close. We saw possibly closing, cul-de-sacking that road there. You would be able to make connection over here, Twenty-third, because the viaduct would all be down. There may be some other driver alley closures, depending on, but again, that's, this is an early stage. But this sort of shows a layout of potential impacts and what it would look like for viaduct. One of the things that makes this site unique is because of the proximity of Delaware, this viaduct would be a fairly long viaduct, which does increase its cost. Again, for just planning purposes, it's not a design estimate or anything's really definitive. Be about sixteen million dollars to construct this. When we're in a developed area, there's usually additional things that have to be done, utility relocations and some things like that, that would increase the cost. Just to look at, we had done previously some conceptual estimates for other viaducts on the east side, one being Hubble Avenue. That one was about fifteen million. Again, these are just round numbers. East Grand and East Walnut would be less than that, about twelve or thirteen, and Dean Avenue would be up fourteen million. These numbers are just provided, just kind of as a ballpark figure about what it costs to build a viaduct in a built-up area. And with that, we go into the traffic study.
The next series of questions had to do with the traffic movement in the area of Hull Avenue, and so to provide information on that, Mike Ring from the Traffic Engineering Department will provide both the traffic analysis and the modeling commentary.
Thank you, Phil.
I'm Mike Ring with the City of Des Moines, the principal traffic engineer. I'll be presenting some highlights of the Hull Avenue traffic analysis, and then also the recommendations that were made as a part of that analysis. It was, as the bullet point says, it was in a traffic study. It was done by a consulting engineer, a professional traffic engineering firm. The study involved a review of the traffic counts and also taking traffic counts and studying traffic patterns for the Hull Avenue railroad closure, proposed closure area, both in the current conditions, taking traffic patterns, and then assuming the Hull Avenue railroad crossing was closed, then it would redirect and redistribute that traffic patterns on the remainder of this traffic network. One of the interesting things, I think, that came out of the study was that, one thing that they did was a license plate study, survey. So they counted license plates as you entered from the, both directions on Hull, as you entered the industrial area, and then also counted those at the end, and they determined that of the total trips that are on Hull, there's about two thousand eight hundred vehicles per day that use Hull. And only about ten to eleven percent of those are actually through trips that enter Hull and then pass through the industrial area and exit on the other side. So most of the trips, eighty to ninety percent, are actually destined for the area. The conclusions of the report were that there were some minor improvements proposed or necessary. These were at intersections along, nearby intersections on Dixon, and those improvements are... are included as a part of the railroad, the proposed railroad agreement. With those minor improvements made, there were no significant traffic disruptions or the congestion level of the remainder of the intersections that were left are at a very adequate level, a very acceptable level of service. In the hierarchy of street networks, the, there are five levels of ability to handle traffic and also desirability, desirability to having traffic flow on them. Those range from freeways as the highest level. They're all depicted on this map on the lower right corner, lower left corner is the, these legends, and in the map, it shows which roadways depict those functional classifications. The highest level is the interstate system. The second highest is the principal arterials, which you can see Euclid and East 14th are. The third highest level is the minor arterials, which show up in green. And the fourth level is the collector's street system, which Hall Avenue is through this area. And the last level is the local street network. Just adding on top of that map, then, is the traffic volumes that were recorded. Euclid Avenue carries approximately 19,000 vehicles per day. Hall Avenue, as I indicated, carries about 2,800 vehicles per day. Guthrie Avenue to the south carries about 10,600 vehicles per day. Might be of note that other, Euclid Avenue is a four-lane divided facility carrying 19,000. If all of the trips were diverted from Hall Avenue to Euclid Avenue, it would carry slightly less than 22,000 vehicles per day. We have a considerable number of our four-lane divided roadways carry that much or more. Fluor Drive, Southeast 14th, East University, carry in the range of 25,000 to 30,000 vehicles per day. The capacity of a four-lane divided roadway is probably in the 30,000 vehicle per day With that, I'd like to show a, well, okay. Just go ahead and show the simulations. These are pictorial, well, pictures of what traffic flow would look like. Just to verify what's being shown on here, this is the intersection of Euclid and Dixon. The original traffic counts and traffic volumes were shown. Added to that was the diverted traffic flows from the railroad crossing, assuming it was closed. And then added on top of that was another 25%, assuming 25% traffic growth over X number of years. There hasn't been a lot of traffic growth historically along these corners for quite a while, for quite a few years, but we did bump the numbers up, the consultant bumped the numbers up by 25%. What you can really see here is just that there is not a lot of congestion. What we would look for in this type of an analysis tool is a lot of backing up of cars at the traffic signal at this location. You would see, if there was a lot of congestion, the cars would not make it through their green signal. They'd be stacked up quite a bit on each leg. This also shows quite evidently the number of trucks that were anticipated to be using this intersection, assuming the closure. And the second one, if I can, if I can go to it relatively quickly, is that Euclid and? This second one is a sample of what the intersection of Dixon and Hall would look like. I think there were some concerns here about how this four-way stop would operate with all the traffic having to go through that intersection on the west leg of the closure. And you can see there's not a significant number of backed up vehicles. One thing that's very, that's evident here is that the simulation does not handle turning trucks especially very well. It's not really intended to pictorially show that. There's other tools that we use to determine how a vehicle might track around a corner. So you might see some trucks actually running into each other. That's not, that's not really the, what happens. The radiuses would be improved to not have that happen. The real purpose of this is to show the amount of backup. With that, I think that covers the traffic analysis portion.
Finally, as part of the information that you folks had asked for was the economic impact of this proposal. So the next piece of information will be presented to you by Rita Connor from the Office of Economic Development.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Rita Connor with the Office of Economic Development, here to try to provide some follow-up information. The economic impact was undertaken specifically for us as staff to be able to compile information about what was going on in the economy in terms of rail, business and industry, how rail is used currently by business and industry, and most importantly, how that affects jobs and tax base within our community. We asked specific questions to folks to try to figure out how impacted their businesses would be if certain things occurred, namely, rail was capacity constrained within the city of Des Moines. They had some specific answers to that that we'll share, but we definitely noted from this exercise that there is an impact to the Des Moines economy, there is an impact to business growth and job opportunities for the city. We thought it was important to go and take an additional moment in our exercise to just look at east Des Moines economic investment. Some of the most strong and significant economic investment to the east side of Des Moines has been made where business and industry meet, in our business parks, and I'll go through that with you briefly. What we've got shown here are four areas that we think are pretty important that this council has put forward good recommendations and policies for. This is as we go down to the southeast part of the community. The objective of the southeast agribusiness park off of Vandelia and Highway 65 was to find ways to diversify the local economy. You'll hear that phrase over and over again as we kind of narrate through some of this history that the council has of trying to find a place for industry proximate to rail, proximate to transportation. This area really lends itself to that. It's close to those facilities and utilities that business and industry tell us that they need. The specific plan that was done for the ag-mergent business park was to try to welcome additional opportunities for value-added ag, which has changed meanings several times over the years, but we expect that that's going to mean opportunities in bioscience, opportunities in renewable energy, of which we've retained and looked at several different proposals over the years, and advanced manufacturing as well. What is high on the list of companies that are looking for land in this type of area, whether it's to the city of Des Moines or to the Greater Des Moines Partnership, is proximity to rail. All told, when this is completed, between the land acquisition and infrastructure investment, this is $36 million of investment. Guthrie Avenue Business Park is farther to the northeast, and this is one of the pieces of real estate, I guess, that's been in the conversation as we've looked at the Hall Avenue closure. The plan that was undertaken for Guthrie is just about 25 years old. Again, diversify the local economy, make sure that Des Moines is an economy that has many sectors that we can hope to find success with, jobs for our citizens and tax base. The undertaking, very much like what we saw in the southeast ag area, was to revitalize an area that was blighted and underutilized. I'll give you a really specific example of that in the next slide, but what this has translated into is taking a very challenged and blighted area that still had some great opportunities for success because it had that rail proximity. It's got the rail line, it's got 235 in close proximity. We went from just under $5 million of taxable valuation from this area when we started the planning exercise to over $24 million of taxable valuation today, and over 700 jobs are based in this business park. This is as specific as it gets when we talk about urban renewal and urban revitalization. We're taking very challenged properties with not a lot of tax base, not generating a lot of employment, very underutilized, and turning it into, this is doll distributing on the right side of the screen, they have expanded in the business park and brought additional jobs to the community, so we consider this in Guthrie a success story. It's very worthwhile to mention other areas that maybe aren't specific to industry and they aren't specific to rail, but these properties that I'm going to talk about are close enough to have us understand that they're going to provide support, commercial services to the areas of industry that we've kind of concentrated our conversation on regarding rail. East Gate is a property that we've been involved in a public-private partnership for several years with Polk County and with a private development interest. What started this exercise was a lot of public investment. Just under $5 million was invested by the city of Des Moines to get this property to where we didn't have constant flood situations, to where it actually could get to the attention of the development community. We feel it's been successful. We look at the just under 40,000 square feet of commercial space in this area and know that that's a successful exercise. We definitely have more work to do in this area, and our partnership with the developer continues. Folks that know what this area used to be might not be surprised to understand that even though a lot of physical infrastructure work has been done, millions of dollars of work, it hasn't completely corrected the fill issues and the soil quality issues that are on these properties. That's the remaining work that is yet to be done to be able to continue to see more square footage added here. And finally, on our list of kind of taking a look at the broader northeast area, this tax increment finance district was established within the last two years. This was a pure effort on the part of the city to take a hard look at what was going on in the area, opportunities for new investment, opportunities to really drive some of that activity. What we hope to see here is commercial and mixed uses, business park, residential, it's an area full of opportunities and we're excited about it. We put in all the layers that we can of potential tools to try to get activity going here, and we hope to work actively with business and neighborhoods to see that flourish. We kind of hone back in, looking at this map, on what we've identified as the northeast industrial area, and it is the concentrated blue. I'll note for the group that this has been important to look at, but we've also had properties down in the southeast area. This is where the southeast ag business park is located, so there's some linkage and there's some meaning here in terms of the economic activity that we see. But just in looking at this area, this is 1,300 acres, which is a significant land mass. Just under 9 million square feet of industrial and commercial buildings exist here. That's a concentration to give us the assessed value of $247 million, over $247 million. That's difficult to find. What we know from looking at this is the areas that are zoned for this type of activity and enterprise within the city of Des Moines are few, and we want to keep those areas competitive. And a key thing to be able to do that is to continue to have rail and not have a capacity-constrained environment where rail services are limited to business and business growth. When we talk about this area, roughly 247 of the parcels that are here are in active commercial and industrial use today. We know that that's a mix of companies. We've got our 11-member employee companies, we've got our 2,000-member employee companies. They're all important in the Des Moines environment, and each sector is vital to us. This gets kind of more specifically into the exercise that we undertook to try to have a further conversation with businesses that are dependent on rail today. We managed to carve out a pretty successful data set of 20 companies that are currently using rail in our community. What that translates into is 3,400 jobs and $51 million of taxable valuation. That's just under $3 million of annual taxes coming back to the city from that existing investment. The words that we heard from some of these companies when asked how rail impacts them, how rail serves them, were things like essential and critical, couldn't do my business without it, any decisions that are made regarding it, which is what we were asking for, we wanted to know that. How will that affect you? Will you be able to grow? And so I think we were very successful reaching out. We want to continue to do that because we think that's an important ongoing conversation. We know that it's important for companies to exist, they're currently using it, they're moving goods with it in and out of the Des Moines market. What we see is their growth opportunities. Most of our existing companies is where most of our growth is going to come from in the city economy, and we're pretty confident of that, so we need to continue in those conversations. The factory that we're listening to very carefully at the national level is reshoring of manufacturing. That's an exciting thing to be able to say in economic development because we haven't consistently seen that type of investment in recent decades. To be able to have a place in that conversation is important for the city of Des Moines. We know we've got limited land, we've got to put it to the best possible use we can to be a welcome home to that business and industry growth for our jobs and tax base, and to be able to increase opportunities, whether we're talking about exporting goods, bringing manufacturers back to the United States, translating activities just to continue to enhance that link between business, their products, and delivering it by rail. This has been an interesting exercise for our office because when you go and talk to businesses that largely aren't seen, they're not retail businesses, they don't have storefronts. What we often find is a whole lot of activity that's going on that nobody knows about. When we say industry, it's changing, it's evolving, it's getting different all the time, it's getting more efficient, it's getting more advanced. Agriculture, we're obviously a state that is extremely dependent on that industry. Manufacturing and construction are industries that we're familiar with and have seen reduced amounts of activity and investment within recent years. We hope that that's on an upswing, and we did talk to lumber companies that are dependent on rail services for getting their product to them. Warehouse and distribution, there are a lot of linkages going on right now within the business and industry economy in Des Moines. We know that people are in charge each day of the logistics and management of goods, and we want to continue to be in those conversations where we try to understand how they best operate, especially as we're looking to make decisions about rail. This really spans everything, research and development, sales, how to get their product to the market. We've gone behind the scenes and seen some fascinating companies, full of Iowa State University engineering graduates, just kind of quietly working and happy in the Des Moines We don't attempt to say with this exercise that we've answered every question, but we can stand firm on the conclusion that rail does deliver product and it supports the local economy. We know that developable industrial property is scarce within the city of Des Moines. We stand in a regional environment, but we understand that it's important for Des Moines to continue to have investments here rather than going somewhere else where the land is maybe less costly and more available. We want to pay attention to that agenda to reshore manufacturing opportunities, and we want to definitely pay attention to what's going on in the region to increase export markets through the rich transportation infrastructure we have here, including rail. If I could leave you with two facts that I think are particularly impactful today, that block of total assessed value for that northeast industrial area is a huge number, $247,587,110. Very difficult to come by, and that took years to compile and build and construct and grow. The 20 companies that we surveyed employ 3,400 people, those jobs are meaningful to our economy and our community. And finally, we haven't had the ability to completely delve into things like payroll and what's going on with employment and taxing and those kind of deep details about business, but what we are seeing in just a conservative estimate sense, looking at what 3,400 people and their jobs and salaries due to the Des Moines economy, that's conservatively $120 million being pumped into the economy. So we're cognizant of that, we're careful in evaluating these factors, and we'll continue on that path. Staff would certainly answer any questions that the council may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Yep.
Jeb?
Could we bring that schematic back up that the traffic analyst had that showed the collector's streets? That's it. I'm trying to figure out why, when the rail line is approximately the same distance from Delaware on Guthrie and Hall, why we couldn't build a viaduct there where Delaware rises up to Hall Avenue like we did at Guthrie?
Oh, on Hall as similar to Guthrie?
Yes.
Well, the standards are different now than back then, but again, like we said, we were just trying to look at a preliminary estimate, what we'd have to do. We would assume that if we wanted to build a hall, we would try to look for federal funding, and with those would come, you know, the most recent standards. funding, and with those would come, you know, the most recent standards. So again, there are many different opportunities. It wasn't meant to be a definitive design, and again, the estimates just what we came up with. Just to give a ballpark reference there, the southeast connector, which is on tonight, that particular viaduct is a little bit easier to build because the property isn't constrained, but that was bid at $10 million. If you take, you don't have to reconstruct existing roads, but kind of give you a ballpark figure about what would be necessary. So it was never intended to be a detailed design.
Thank you.
Do you have a question then? Going back to the viaduct diagram that you had, if I recall correctly where you showed the distance, it appeared that it was moving into residential area, and so would there be residential properties down here on? Those are all residential properties, so are we looking at the acquisition of several properties down there?
Again, at this kind of level of detail, it's difficult to do it that. Obviously, there are homes associated with there. There may be things to do, like MSC walls where you could put the walls in the right of way and you wouldn't have to take homes. I mean, that would be our first priority in design, is not to impact them. They may impact the circulation of the local network, but we really didn't identify any property takings at this level.
Okay.
Jeb, I think part of this, and I have extended out so far, is due to the ADA requirements that are more pronounced now than they were when Guthrie was built.
Right. The assumption was you would, we would be required to keep pedestrian connectivity across this, that we would want to have sidewalks and things if we're going to build a viaduct, in which case you don't, you know, you have to have grades that aren't so steep that it makes it difficult for people in wheelchairs to get up over the viaduct.
Is that true of the Guthrie viaduct now, that it's too steep?
Well, again, when you look at the ADA, and that's a very specific legislation, and I can't address all of it, but they look at what was the standard at the time in which it was built. I mean, the ADA is a newer standard, and actually, it's been evolving, even though the law's been passed. Proag's actually very recent as far as how that's implemented in right-ofways. Originally primarily for facilities, and it's now been expanded to right-ofways.
Any other questions? Jeb, thank you. If anything comes up, I hope all of you will remain in the vicinity. Why don't we go ahead and unless any of the council has any further comments or questions, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing and ask the public to step forward and give us your name and address, and give us your comments if you would, please. Council has decided that we're going to start with three minutes each, so hopefully, and everybody's going to give us all new information. If somebody thinks it appropriate, and there's something that might reflect to everybody that's in here, or at least some of the people in here, you might ask them, you know, how many of you are, you know, with us on this deal, and that would help give us a sense of it. So whoever's first?
First of all, I'd like to know what you've got, that's seven of them.
Thanks to council members for allowing me to speak here tonight. My name is John Thomas. I'm with the president of the Fairmount Park Neighborhood Association. Needless to say, we got a lot of upset neighbors over this, but I don't know how I can follow all this. These people, are you from the railroad?
No, sir.
Oh, you're from the city.
How many of you are part of the Winterset Neighborhood Group?
Winterset.
I'm in Fairmount Park, I'm sorry.
I'm here, what?
Okay, so we got three or four. You got some of your partners here.
Good. I was looking for UP people. They talk about all this infrastructure and what it costs and everything. I'd like to see the railroad put some money in their own infrastructure, heavier rail, quicker turnouts. Let's put some money in the game here a little bit. They got to fix up Short Line Junction Yard, get it up so where they can go about 20 mile an hour in and out of the yard. How much longer do they want to run these trains? How many cars they got to have on them? You know, you can make a train up in two different tracks, and, you know, you don't have to have it all on one track. If they're going to run 200-car trains, why, that's a lot of cars. I don't know how they're going to manage keeping them together for that long, but that's their problem. But I think the people would be a little bit more comfortable knowing that if they see the railroad spending some money on their track and doing some infrastructure work on their own, they might feel a little differently about things. So take that back to your boss and see what we can do. Or they, do they have plans of running trains north and south, east and west, out of the Short Line Junction Yard here? What's their plans? We don't have no idea. Nobody's got any answers for that. So, you know, those are questions we'd like to have answered. Yeah?
Okay. Questions? Need answers?
Marty Mock, 2701 Arthur. If I remember the history of this, about two years ago, a little over two years ago, a letter was sent to you in Pacific asking them, what can they do to help us not have blocked intersections? Their answer was, close them. That's it. And that's really what we got here, is the issue of, they're not helping us really do anything. They have not proposed to any of us how much time is going to be saved in trains going by some of the other areas, for example, Hubble Avenue, by having these areas closed. They've been mum on the subject all along, the question's been asked and asked and asked, and they simply will not respond. They have no issue, no ability to know how much time is going to be saved on those other ones. We would have been better off if they had just said no, as citizens, because that's really where we are right now. As I go back and forth on Hall, I'm one of the few little drivers they seem to expect to go is on Hall every day. I probably get stopped by trains maybe two to three times a week, but all the rest of the time that I go on Hall, I get acrossed. Now, of course, they've not maintained the tracks one little bit there, and you can break an axle going across some of those tracks, but the fact remains is that most of the time, 75% of the time, I can get across Hall Avenue. And so we'd be better off if they just said, no, we can't do anything, and we'd have had Hall Avenue and 34th and 36th just go ahead and operate the way it is, because we would still have access, but we don't. At least, that's what the plan is right now. To me, this is very, no different than corporate welfare. And it's all to, and I hope the railroad paid big money to some of our staff for the cheerleading job they just did for the railroad, because I've not heard one word from the staff about the impact upon the residents of Des Moines, and particularly ones that live around this area. A number of months ago, the Plan Zoning Commission had this before them. They voted it down, eight to five, and the reason for that was the fact that they could see no long-term plans in this development. All the railroad was concerned about, and it seems like all the staff was concerned about, were these particular intersections. So we don't know what long-term is. Are they going to close another ones? What are they going to need in the future? I think the Plan Zoning Commission was very good in understanding that when you have no long-term plans, why are we doing anything in the first place? We may actually end up being in worse shape in a few months or a few years because the railroad's going to come back and say, oh, let us find a way we can help you on some of the other crossings by closing some more. Since no plans, and I remember the last meeting we had here, the mayor asked, he says, I'm going to, can I have one more minute?
Go ahead.
The mayor asked, he said, I'm going to wait and see what we can develop by our next meeting. As we voted yes to see what we could develop, there has been nothing new in development between the last meeting and this meeting. Nothing new. No new ideas, no new strategies, nothing new. In other words, it was a done deal at the last meeting, and we're just wasting time having another meeting. Last thing I want to say is that to bring Eastgate in here, as a reason why we need to do this for the railroad, is utter ridiculousness. It's like a little carrot out there. We do something for the railroad, maybe Eastgate's going to be developed in a better way. That's stupid. If we're going to develop Eastgate, let's get out there and develop Eastgate and not make the railroad a scapegoat for not developing Eastgate. Thank you.
Marlin Mormon 3320 Kinsey. First, I want to ask, would everybody who opposes the closing of these railroads, raise your hand? All right, thank you. Put your hands down. Now, everybody who'd like to see some overpasses and bridges on those railroads, raise your hand. Thank you. You know, there is an economic impact, and actually, what I call it is a tax. When you close these, you have 3,300 cars a day, 365 days a year. I'm estimating three miles a day, which I think is very conservative. The federal rate right now for passenger vehicles is 56.5 cents. Doesn't take into account what you pay for a commercial vehicle. That's about $2 million a year. That's a tax, and that is a tax. And there's the economic impact that we haven't heard of. $2 million a year on the citizens that use these roads every day. It's a tax, and that's what it's about, is a tax. So, you know, I oppose this, and I oppose it for a lot of people. Many of them are not going to speak tonight, they came here just to show support. That's all I have. Any questions? Bob?
How do you calculate three miles when it's only like four blocks one way or the other to get to either Guthrie or Euclid?
Well, it depends which way you go, Bob, because when you start at the railroad tracks and make a complete circle around, it isn't just four blocks, Bob.
It could go a long way if you wanted to, but you can go a lot shorter, too.
You can go, take it down a little bit, take it a mile and a half. You've still got $1 million, $1 million a year. It's a tax. Anything else?
Well, there's a lot of alternate routes around there.
Sure are. There are a lot of alternate routes, and we can also go up in mileage from 56.5 cents to maybe a buck fifty for trucks. So any other questions?
Trucks usually have a destination there, or they wouldn't be coming that way.
Yeah, perhaps. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
My name is Frank Call, 125 East 35th Court, and I just want to deal with strictly the closing of Southeast 34th. We've gone through this over and over again on cutting off this neighborhood. Excuse me. The young lady right here that spoke was talking about the economic development and, you know, what is this going to do to the integrity of these neighborhoods? And you're going to end up driving people away. It might not, you might get your businesses in, but the people that are going to work in there are going to move, because they're not going to want to be tied in. The gentleman that spoke before, there was saying there's been no plan offered to the citizens of Des Moines. Very correct. And from the word that has been passed down through our neighborhood associations is the railroad has made the offer to the city of Des Moines that they will do so-and-so if the city will do so-and-so. But it's a winner-take-all thing. You're either going to do it all, or they're not going to do anything. Now, members of the council, this is extortion, period. You know, they're telling you, well, we just won't do anything at all if you don't just give us what we want. You cannot give in to them now with this extortion, because if you do, you're kicking a can down the road, and every time that railroad whines, they're going to come right back to the city council and say, well, you did it for us last time, you got to do it for us again. So now, down the road, not in my lifetime, but down the road, you've completely destroyed the whole east side of Des Moines, because as the lady said, there's a shortage of property for industry. You can't do it downtown, you can't do it in West Des Moines. Where do you have to go? Strictly through the east side. What about the citizens of those neighborhoods? Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Mike Blackley, Union Pacific Railroad, manager of Public Projects, Omaha, Nebraska. Quite some time ago, we sat down with the mayor and a few council members to discuss the issues on the east side for traffic delays, and we did a lot of meetings, a lot of talkings, a lot of discussion internally, and we came up with a plan to address that with the closure of the Hall Avenue crossing to give us more abilities and the fluidity to move in and out of our yard at the short line yard. Good rail service is critical for the communities. We have to have the ability to serve the existing customers and look at the growth potential that there is here in the city of Des Moines. We've looked through the process, and this closures and the other infrastructure improvements that we are proposing at this time will give us the ability to serve Des Moines for now and into the future. We can't predict how it will look like, but we do know it will grow, and it is presently growing today. Right now, the proposal addresses the current capacity deficit in Des Moines. Approve us, we'll let it begin to talk about the future rail service development in the city of Des Moines, and we look forward to participating in those discussions with the city on what we need to do in the future after this. Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes?
In one of the very first meetings that we held, it was explained to us that this is the backbone line, that's what you call it, from basically Duluth to Kansas City.
Correct.
And it was explained to us the trains were going to become longer primarily because of fracking sand, and there was a great need to get them off that backbone into the short line so northbound trains could come through. How has that turned into capacity constraint?
If we don't have the ability to move those longer trains more fluidly in and out of the yard, and the ability to switch those to keep our main line open going to the north, it constrains our ability to move the volume and number of trains through the city of Des Moines.
So how's that turned into it's going to impact business in Des Moines? I don't get it. It was made very clear you had to get the southbound trains off the backbone to get the northbound trains through. Now it's turned into it's going to impact business in Des Moines.
If we can't, if we are constrained through town with the existing traffic and trying to bring the commodities into the community for the users that are in the city of Des Moines, that can back that flow up. Also, the commodities going out of the city that we pick up to take to different destinations from the city of Des Moines. If we can't move trains through town more efficiently, it's going to affect the whole system and all the users of the rail service in the community.
Would you give us your name again? I didn't get it.
Mike Blackley.
Mike, thank you.
Question?
Yes.
Could you go back, and you talked about future growth and expansion, and you'd be coming back and working with the city. To be perfectly honest, I cannot remember when Union Pacific has been before us with a request. Do you know when that would have been?
Well, this is in relationship.
No, I mean before this issue that we're dealing with. You know, was Union Pacific, have you been at this council table any time prior to this particular issue, say, in the last 10 to 15 years?
I don't have that information. I can't.
Do we know from a staff perspective? I mean, I don't remember them ever being here. The point I'm trying to make is that the comment that is being made is, is that you're going to be coming back and back and back, and I'm saying...
No, we, as far as I know, no, we haven't been here. The reason, we were called by the mayor, and Skip was at the meeting to talk about the east side, and this was how long ago?
Two years, two and a half?
Two and a half years ago. And that's the first time we've been to town.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mike? Thanks, Mike.
Cynthia Raymond, Laurel Hill Neighborhood. I have a handout here that will give you an idea of what time is actually available once they say that certain criteria is going to happen, if it happens, in the next 27 years. I do have just one thing to say in regards to the last question that was given to this gentleman, is that I moved into this neighborhood in 1985, and we were told at that time that, you know, Union Pacific is trying to get these closed. This was in 1985. At that time, I lived at 3538 Scott Avenue, just south of where I live now, and so that's been just a little bit longer than three or four years. Okay, well, here we are, we're down to the wire, and tonight, we're going to decide. You know, we've got to decide between two different ways of thinking. You know, one's proposing to close permanently the neighborhood streets that intersect Union Pacific Railroad. Now, I'm going to use one of their estimates to give you an idea of how I'm looking at this. First of all, they told us that by two... First of all, they told us, and I, that by two thousand forty, Hull will be blocked by the longer trains sixty percent of the time. Now, I use this because it must be the best example that they have in proving their point, or they wouldn't have used those figures. That leaves forty percent of the time when there is no blockage. And if you'll look at your, I know, I put it on here, I don't know if there's any way to get people to see it for everybody, but, um, there is, the figures are there. Okay, good, good. That means that forty percent of the time that the residents could use it. Now, this is the only, or one of the few, east-west routes that is not a highway. You know, East Euclid is Highway Six. East University is one-sixty-three. Now, the volume is great, but I don't know about anybody else, but I don't want to go down East Euclid during the time I have to get to, to, uh, work if I've got to be against people driving crazy because there's so much traffic that they're afraid they're going to be late. I'd much rather go on a, on a, a street that has less traffic that gives me the ease of going, and I'm not the only one. It's not like there's not a bunch of cars on there, but they're not crazy people. You know, they're going through a residential area, so they know, in most cases, they're going to have to be twenty-five miles an hour. I'm okay with that. Okay, the, um, now, the other thing is, again, this is an estimate. So, in the next twenty-seven years, rail traffic will increase to sixty percent. I don't think it makes any sense to close it. I think that what we need to do is monitor it. I mean, ten years, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, to see if those estimates are really valid. Could I have another minute, please?
Counselor.
Recently, I went to a watershed meeting over on the east side about the Four Mile Creek. And the reason I bring that up is that one of their big points was, uh, you know, we're not going to be able to do this all the time, all at the same time. There's a lot of different problems along this whole thing, and not every problem is going to have the same solution. So, let us do a little bit here, a little bit there, stop, see, do a monitor, how has it affected it? Is it good? Is it bad? Okay, this is the same process that we should be using here. This is not new. You know, you guys, the city brought this up at the meeting, you know? So, here we go. Let's put in the, let the UP put in their yard switches, see how that affects the flow. Does it make it faster? Has the city, and have the city install those warning signs on Euclid, on Guthrie, so that those traffic won't get bottlenecked down there? Monitor them to see how it affects.
Could you wind it up, Cynthia?
I'll try. I'm just saying that the other side is, you don't need to close these now. Monitor it, check for a better solution because there is one. There can be one. Technology is advancing at such a state, there's no doubt that there will be one way before twenty-seven years go by, when the maybe sixty percent will be blocked. And if you'll look, the hours, and you have the hours here, that it will be blocked add up to ten years of available time out of the twenty-seven years that's not blocked.
Cindy, you look like you use twenty-four hours a day. Did you, uh, how do you differentiate between day and AM hours and PM?
Well, you know what? I didn't really differentiate, and the reason I didn't, well, they didn't in their sim, in their, uh...
Well, I'm thinking...
Example either.
Your AM hours, you've got people going back and forth to work, and nights, you probably wouldn't have.
Well, I, my husband worked nights for fifteen years. So, I'm just sure that there's a plenty of people that do that, too. And I, I think that, you know, that's, uh, all well and good, but when I'm not working, that's probably when I'm mostly on these roads. So, I don't think it's necessarily someone getting to and from work. It's someone visiting a family member, visiting a family member down at Luther Park. You know, there are, there are other instances, and, and you're right, there are more than, um, my eight hours of workday and to and from work, which maybe, let's put it to ten.
I just use that because you mentioned, you're going to work, you'd rather go on lesser traveled roads.
That's true, and I, for the first time in my life, I have a job that's only eight to five, not a split shift, not a afternoon or weekend, so I just know what both sides use. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Cindy, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Larry Payton. I live at twenty-six oh-one East Walnut, and, uh, I am a, a member of the Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association, and it seems like I've really run into a buzzsaw about trains and so on and so forth. And I'm here to speak, excuse me, about the, uh, traffic conditions mainly into the Fairgrounds Neighborhood, Dean Avenue, Walnut, and Grand Avenue. When the trains go by there, they block this thing up, and that's become a problem. And it's begun to become an even bigger problem because I think the Union Pacific has said there's going to be more trains, and they're going to be longer. And the problem exists on here and on about three different sides. We have the civilian traffic, if you will, the people that come up there, and, and they wait for the traffic to go by. Well, they leave their engines motoring, and that does one thing, it wastes fuel, and it causes damage to the engine, which sooner or later is going to add more pollution to the air. In the wintertime, uh, they leave the, the cars running so they can get heat in there. Same problem. The second side of this is the commercial side. We've got, uh, truck routes down in there, we've got vans, we've got all sorts of, uh, commercial vehicles coming in through there, and when they have to stop and sit there, as any owner-operator will tell you, when the wheels aren't moving, they're losing money. And when they lose money, they turn right around and charge you and I for more than certain goods. And third, the problem we have is the city provided services, fire, police, and medical. I believe we have, in, in that particular neighborhood, uh, probably a squad car that can, um, hit most any time, twenty-four, seven. But fire and medical, uh-uh, they don't hang around down there. And if they are forced to go around or to sit and wait, which they don't, then that's awfully critical to whoever's on the other end. And so, we are imploring, excuse me, asking for, uh, some method, biaduct, overpass, excuse me, bridge, whatever it is, to come into consideration. So, in conclusion, and I don't, I don't want to sound like a, like a history teacher, but about eighteen-sixty-three, there was a gentleman that stood out on a real bloody batty field, and he dedicated the ceremony, or dedicated the cemetery there. And he ended that dedication by saying, "A government of the people, by the people, and for the people." And I believe it's time that this government do something for the people. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri Cooper, Fairgrounds Neighborhood Association. I have more signatures. I presented some at last meeting. Not a whole lot yet because of the weather. It's not very, hasn't been very nice. Also, oh, yeah, we have some signs that we wanted to share with you stating that what we're wanting. Thanks, guys. Appreciate that. I had Rick Clark come to our meeting last month. Thank you so much. Appreciate it that very much. After our meeting with you, you said you really want to help the east side. I truly believe that. I also spoke with the assistant city manager, and he said there wasn't monies for an overpass. And after I talked to him, I thought, you know what? The east side's getting tired of standing at the end of the line. We would really like to move to the front, and we'd appreciate it to me. I'm sorry? Sorry?
Get closer, Mike.
I said, "The east side is tired of waiting at the end of the line. We would really like to be moved to the front of the line and be given an overpass. We would really appreciate that." Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jim Feroli. I work for Archer Daniels Midland, nineteen-thirty-five East Euclid Avenue. In the late nineteen-thirties, there's a grain elevator built on the northeast side of Des Moines, and at that time, the area was occupied by farm fields in a single north-south railroad line. Over the last seventy-five years, the northeast side of Des Moines has become a busy commercial and shipping district, due in large part to the location on the intersection of cross-country freight lanes of Interstate eighty and thirty-five, as well as the intersection of several railroads here in town. Given its geographic location at the center of the highest-producing agricultural land in the world, and with access to railroads for export, Des Moines, Iowa is strategically positioned to ship and, um, to receive inbound raw materials and ship local produce to domestic markets within the United States, as well as to export, um, to markets linking Iowa agriculture with the consumers around the world. The grain elevator that was built on northeast side of Des Moines more than seventy-five years ago has been expanded into what is now one of the premier soybean processing plants in North America and part of ADM's soy crushing network. As a result, the ADM plant in Des Moines will continue to be a strong candidate for future investments. However, logistical efficiency is more important than ever in our business as we face increasing competition from competitors not only in the United States, but also from competition in South America and China. Thus, it is imperative for, for the future growth and long-term survival of industry in Des Moines that we are able to continue to improve our logistical efficiencies, to improve our competitiveness worldwide. ADM has invested thirty million dollars in this facility over the last three years alone, and in that time, our capacities increased thirty percent. Rail traffic has also increased about twenty percent over that time, with well over seven-hundred cars entering and leaving our, our facility each month. We process one-point-four-million tons of soybeans, um, every year, produce on about five thousand local Iowa farms, and accounting for more than seven-hundred million dollars in revenue at today's commodity prices. Our most recent property taxes for this location amounted to one million dollars, and of the hundred-and-fifty-five employees and contractors who work here, they account for a payroll of over ten million dollars. This is an important location for ADM to continue to have opportunities for expansion with over, with a three-million-dollar project ready to proceed, depending on the outcome of this project. Agriculture contributes seventy-five billion dollars to the Iowa economy every year, or approximately thirty percent of our state GDP. Infrastructure needed to ship and load the vast and growing quantity of ag commodities is aging. This is an excellent opportunity to use private contributions to improve road and rail infrastructure to meet current and future needs of business in the community. Continued support of infrastructure improvements will attract business and drive the economy and the community forward. This is a great city, and ADM is proud to be part of it. Thank you for your time.
Jim, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah. What, what's your position with ADM?
I'm the manager of the plant here in Des Moines and also one in Missouri.
So, yours isn't being automated?
What do you mean automated?
Well, one of the meetings at ADM, the state one was made that you were automating jobs there.
I mean, we continue to invest in technology that improves the process, but our payrolls, they continue to expand both on, uh, the amount of, of our payroll, as well as the number of jobs of, of people that we employ there.
The answer's no. Your job's not being automated.
My job?
Yeah.
I, potentially, I don't know. It could happen. We're always investing in technology to, to improve everything we've done. I mean, we've improved, we've expanded capacity by thirty percent. That's, that's required more people to work there. At the same time, our emissions are down, so we emit less even though we produce more. It's, uh, we're always investing in the plant and the process. And, you know, you made a comment earlier, um, asking Mike Blackley about what happens if, uh, you know, there's capacity constraints when you're moving trains through town. I mean, it's, it's an unfortunate situation, but as their capacity has increased over the last twelve months, it's forced us to go different directions with, with inbound and outbound rail. So, you know, that's what we see locally here. If we've got trains loaded that can't ship because they're at capacity, then our customers, either whether they're in Texas or Mexico or in other parts of the world, they don't get shipments out of Des Moines, we start shipping that stuff from other places. We start shipping, uh, soybeans from Iowa to other plants to process them in other places and ship them other directions. So, that's what, that's how capacity constraints on the railroad affect local businesses, and it, it's real. And they'll tell you because it's lost revenue for them, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alan Williams. I'm not a resident of Des Moines, but I work for the State of Iowa Economic Development Authority, have done so as a project manager for the past eighteen years, during which time I've successfully worked over a hundred-and-thirty location and, and expansion projects. One of my earliest projects here in central Iowa was Marilla Pasta Manufacturing Facility in Ames, Iowa, a good example of a company for whom rail was critical in their site selection process. They did, uh, evaluate sites in Des Moines, but ultimately chose Ames. My most recent project was the Facebook, uh, data center located in Altoona. Obviously, they did not need rail. A great majority of economic development projects do not need rail service. For most projects, truck service will do, but for those that do need rail service, there's no substitute. Those large capital-intensive industries like ADM handling grain, uh, rail traffic is the most efficient mode of transportation, as it uses seventy-five percent less fuel than trucks, and it also emits seventy-five percent fewer greenhouse gases than trucking. Des Moines is fortunate to have the ADM facility, the UP facility, and all the high-paying, blue-collar jobs that go with it located here in Des Moines. Without rail service, those good jobs would not be here. They would be somewhere else. I know that we don't have enough good rail service sites in Iowa. I wish we had more to attract more industry and business to the state. It's an economic fact of life that large multing, multinational companies like ADM, Cargill, Bridgestone, and others are always evaluating where to spend their capital. Capital flows where it is welcomed, and companies can earn a profit. If these proposed rail street improvements were not made at some point in the future, all that investment in jobs could be at risk of moving somewhere else. I'm certain that if you picked up the ADM facility, UP jobs, and offer them to other communities and states across the country, tens of millions of dollars of economic incentives would be offered to have that economic input occur in their community. My eighteen years in working for the State of Iowa have learned that it's much easier to keep what you have and encourage them to grow as opposed to attract a new industry. In fact, over eighty-five percent of our new investment, new jobs, are created by existing industries that are currently here in Iowa. Here at the State of Iowa, we look at companies like ADM and Union Pacific as existing customers, and as the saying goes, if you don't take care of your customers, someone else will. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Swayze. I'm the, um, Business Recruitment Director and Existing Industry Manager for the Greater Des Moines Partnership, also a, um, Des Moines resident, forty-four-twelve Southwest Thirty-Third in Des Moines. First and foremost, I want to, um, thank you for serving on the council and, and as the mayor. Obviously, there's very difficult decisions that need to be made that affect neighborhoods that then affect a city with a population of over two-hundred thousand and a metro region of a population of getting close to seven-hundred thousand people. So, there's, these are big decisions, and thank you for your, um, for your service to, to our city. My job is to help promote the area and to create jobs, so most of my discussion is based on job creation, and as Alan just stated, the vast majority of our jobs are created from existing companies. And Des Moines, uh, the fact is that Des Moines is at capacity, and if we become capacity-constrained, we are putting our existing companies at a competitive disadvantage, uh, and, and they will start shipping from other parts of this, of the country and of the world. And, uh, just, uh, just a few job numbers, uh, the Union Pacific has over a hundred-and-seventy jobs in the Des Moines metro area with a payroll of over twelve million annual. ADM, we just mentioned, had a hundred-and-fifty-five jobs, a payroll of ten million. The total jobs that we have been able to identify recently, uh, through some of Rita's work, um, affected by rail service is around, uh, it's over three thousand. I think the number's thirty-four hundred, and the payroll of that is over three-hundred million dollars of annual payroll, people with jobs in our market spending money. That's a very substantial number, and even if we don't consider recruiting new companies to the area, obviously, uh, just to take care of our own existing companies and help them remain competitive throughout the country is, is vitally important. I do have, uh, a couple of future projects, uh, that are waiting to find out the outcome of, of service in the area. One is an existing company considering a ten-to-twenty-million-dollar investment in new equipment, and they have locations in about six different areas in the, uh, around the state and the Midwest. And then I also have, uh, at least two prospects that have inquired on the area, and, and they're looking for a rail service site. So, it's not going away. Good rail sites are at a premium in the country, and, uh, the more that we can do to make our area competitive, the better. Obviously... Obviously, uh, I mentioned this, I think at the last meeting, when we get requests into the Greater Des Moines Partnership, uh, from companies or site selection consultants looking where to locate a facility, they're never looking for a reason to keep us on the list. They always have a list of options, and they're always looking for a reason to check us off the list, and check all the others off the list, for that matter. So the more, uh, competitive, uh, we can be, the better. And so if we put ourselves at a competitive disadvantage, um, that's going to hurt our efforts as we recruit companies and help our existing companies expand. Just a quick last item, um, if the UP remains capacity-constrained, they will have to put all of their resources into the industrial traffic, and any discussion on passenger rail, um, some of the efforts that we've been working on passenger rail, I think, will go away, and, uh, that'll become a mute point. So, thank you for your time, and again, thank you for your service.
Just one question, um, in, on the last point, you have some sense that there is a renewed interest in passenger rail, listening to what's going on up in the hill this year? I kind of thought we'd lost that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it's been a, an issue that's been an uphill battle. Um, there's certainly been money appropriated at federal level, and so there's some funds out there to, to decide whether we want to move forward or not, and it's still a priority that we're working towards.
I'm with you on that one.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you again.
My name's Don Curran. I live at 2912 Dean Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, and all I've heard from the railroad and ADM is how much economy they're bringing into the city of Des Moines. I've never heard how much money they're making from the people of the city of Des Moines. It's all how much they contribute. They don't say anything about where the profit is. They don't say where that money's going. We know that UP, most of that money goes to Omaha. It don't stay in the city of Des Moines. And if they want a win-win situation, instead of them holding the ax over our head, let them donate some money, put the biologs in. Let them help with it, you know? They're not wanting to put any money into the city of Des Moines. All they want to do is take the money out. Thank you.
My name's Dana Newkirk. Uh, I live at 2700 East 38th Street, Des Moines, so I'm an East sider. And recently, and this will tie in, you guys gave us this. It's a snow fence. It's plastic. It's red. It stretches on as far as the eye can see. Thank you, by the way. And why this ties in to what everything else here is going on is the fact that when you start tearing down neighborhoods, dead-ending them, giving us things like this, and putting nice green spaces on the west side, and leaving us with a toxic plastic fence that goes on for almost a quarter of a mile. Thank you again. That was decided in your last meeting, by the way, aside from this. Um, it took me, we're going to change venues, it took me 45 minutes to cross over, and it wasn't, uh, to go under the pass because there was a train on the tracks. And those are the things that I negotiate, because I live on the east side. Do any of you folks live on the east side? Hands. Is it fun?
Sure.
Is it, is it fun to cross back and forth?
I don't know. I lived there all my life, so I don't know whether it's any different or not.
Well, it took me about 45 minutes, and when you've got somebody that is sick in the car that has to go to the hospital, it takes a long time. And it wasn't, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't a time period where it was rush hour. It was, uh, about 3:15 when we started out, and I was late getting here. Uh, anyway, what I wanted to say is, just because my neighborhood might be out of sight and out of mind from your neighborhood, doesn't mean that it doesn't exist, that it's not part of Des Moines. And when you, and when you, anyway, when you, when you eat at it, and you put up a toxic fence, or you put up a train car dump on one side of town, it pulls the whole city down. So I was wondering to, and wanting to ask you to be very careful with what you decide here, and be very careful as to whose lives you disrupt, whose lives you cut off, and the fact that nobody, our property values go down, and nobody wants to live on this side of town. This is what I do for a living. I'm going to continue to do it for a living, and I've brought this to the attention of the newspapers, of the people in Congress here, to the state legislators, and I will continue to do this. And I never was that kind of person. I was a wildlife photographer before. You've cut me off from an area that I like to take a walk in. You could have put park benches, you could have put trees, you could have put boulders in the way of those people four-wheeling, and turned that into a lovely green space, just like Waterworks Park. Just a few trees, just a little bit of consideration for us. We're all sitting here. None of us want a train dump on our side of town. None of us want to be cut off from the rest of Des Moines. Thank you for your time. Please, please consider these people and me when you make your decisions here today.
Dana?
Thank you.
Dana? Are you talking about the snow fence down on Four Mile Drive?
Yes, I am.
That's just a temporary thing to stop the people from driving their cars off-road in the first week in July.
I've never seen a temporary thing like that on the west side of this city.
I've never seen anybody do, Dana?
I'm trying to tell you right now, when you folks eat and eat and niche away at the way things look, and you don't give us any consideration at all, there's areas that you could be working at, you could provide jobs right now with the parks people to put something nice there. You could be designing something decent for the people of the east side community.
Dana, we are doing that. I'm on the committee, and so is Frank, that's on the committee to do this. That was just temporary until we can get posts put in there, just like any other park in town.
I'll be waiting. Thank you.
My name is Cherie Martis. I'm here representing the Key Paul Avenue Open Campaign, and I've been talking to a lot of people out over the last, uh, four or five months, um, because I think that's really the best way to find out, you know, really what people are thinking. Um, and so I've had an opportunity to make lots of phone calls. I've been talking to people in our, uh, grocery stores and, uh, in our neighborhoods. And I'd like to again thank Skip Moore for his support, um, and for Mayor County. Uh, they met with our, uh, new, we've just, we launched our Neighborhood Association, the Fairmont Garden West Neighborhood Association, and they were kind enough to come and, and, uh, show some enthusiasm for, uh, seeking out a 21st century design solution that's win-win. Um, and that certainly helped our Neighborhood Association to get, to get a good start off. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Mahaffey, you have still not met or attended one of our, uh, Fairmont Garden West Neighborhood Association meetings. The door is always open.
I met, I met with the leader today.
Yeah, you know, but that, that, uh, that certainly, I don't think at this point is doing your image any good when you're meeting in the 11th hour just before a meeting like this and offering to give some amenities to our city park that is in shambles. Um, there seems to be no real understanding. Uh, we've all just received, received our tax assessments, and our properties have lost about 10 percent in value. Um, the newspaper headlines are talking about new housing recovery. We have not felt that because we have not recovered from the foreclosure crisis. Middle, everybody knows that middle-class and poor neighborhoods were targeted for that, and we are the least likely to get help in, uh, when we request, uh, refan, refinancing our loans. I've been listening today to economic impacts, and I've been reading, I, I've continued to read about the Tomorrow Plan and the Capitol Crossroads Plan, and quite frankly, it's really hard to take any of it seriously when people involved in those groups, and bearing in mind the kind of conduct, uh, discussions that we've had today from the point of view of business, um, there's been very little talk about how it really impacts real people's lives, and there's some real safety issues. But my neighbors and I are sitting next to a brown-blided, underused, uh, industrial area, um, and the plans that are being presented today are really sort of piecemeal. Um, it's really an area that needs broad-based, uh, renewal, and some really long-term good planning that, uh, is looking for win-win solutions. The problem with what's being presented today is we are working on Union Pacific time. We're not yet working on what is going to be good for sustainable neighborhoods, what is going to be good to really create good, uh, green spaces that will create a connectivity and accessibility. Um, it's unfortunate that we can't seem to get out of our 20th century thinking. We can't move forward to a 21st century design solution to create a win-win outcome. We have already wasted valuable time using a 20th century flawed blueprint that reflects a lousy case study for Des Moines. We need to be concerned about how this reflects. This is a competitive world. Um, I'd like to show you a couple pictures. This is the brown-blided industrial space that we're, um, left with. Again, this sits right next to our residential neighborhood. But these are the kinds of people that this is impacting. Putting up a barrier, a barricade, will not keep these people out. This is a, uh, a gentleman walking his three-year-old daughter and infant son in a stroller, um, and they are headed east, right down Hall Avenue to Dixon. So a barrier further down the line isn't going to stop this. We have people on bicycles also. There is no sidewalk, there's no curbing, there is a ditch. I didn't see this man. There was a semi in front of me. I saw the semi swing out around him, and there he was. I got in my car, and I took him to his brother that lives on East 25th. I, I, I took his children and him in the stroller. This is a picture of a police officer, uh, going down Hall Avenue. You know, we're very concerned about detour routes for emergency services. No detour is ever, is ever any good for a detour. Uh, if we're really concerned about safety, a barrier off Hall Avenue in Delaware won't prevent, uh, people from using this, this particular area. The problem with the proposals that have been presented is that they are not comprehensive. Uh, they do not involve planning for an entire blighted area. Uh, you're trying to superimpose a viaduct into a space as it is laid out now, and that is not a 20th, uh, first-century design solution. It's trying to fit a round peg in a square hole. Connecting neighborhoods with a seamless green space through the existing industrial area requires a new vision. A traffic study that doesn't look at the safety of pedestrians and bicycles is invalid. We have wasted time and resources on a 21st century, uh, 20th century design. Uh, we need a comprehensive plan. Rushing through this, rushing to, uh, conclude this debate because people are getting weary is simply unacceptable. We should be creating a public-owned group like the Great River Greenway in St. Louis that has created a wonderful trestle that has been a win-win solution. It is incredible that we are not asking Union Pacific and ADM to put some real skin in the game. We're talking about multi-million dollar, multi-billion dollar global entities that can afford to put some skin in the game and sit down and negotiate with us in good faith, and come up with a win-win solution.
Cherie, I appreciate your impassioned, uh, speaking. We've let you run about four minutes over.
It's okay, Mayor, I'm actually done.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, we're a different man.
You're what?
Different item. Okay.
All right, question. Anybody else? Because after this, we're going to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. I'm Valerie Madison. I live at 2716 Sampson, and I have a question on the sta, the, if I can talk, the traffic study on Hall, and I asked this initially and received no answer from Union Pacific and ADM. Uh, they said there was 2,800 cars per day. I asked, when was that study done? I zeroed in that it was probably during spring break. There is a school, Garten Elementary, that a lot of our children in, uh, on Hall, what, not Hall, uh, the apartments opposite Sampson, and on Sampson that go to Garten, and they are deeply affected by this. Uh, so I would hope that I could get an answer eventually when that traffic study was done. Thank you.
I think the traffic study was done by our people, not by Union Pacific, wasn't Mike?
I can answer that question. Uh, Mayor Mike Ring, City, uh, Principal Traffic Engineer. The, the traffic counts that were taken, that were in the study were taken in March. Uh, we did look, and I think the concern was whether they were taken during, uh...
Vacation.
Vacation of, of public school when the spring break was on, and they were not. They were taken, uh, outside of that period. Um, was that?
March of this year, Mike?
They were taken in March of, um, it wasn't this year. The studies, the project's been underway for a number of years. I think that, I think they were taken in, uh, 2011 were the actual count, but they've been, they've been reviewed, and the volumes have not changed in that area.
But it was by city staff and not by UP, I think. She tried to get the information from UP, I believe.
The, the traffic study was, the, the counts were taken, some were taken by the city of Des Moines, some were taken by the traffic consultant. Um, yes.
Consultant for whom? City or for whom?
The, the study was, uh, was, um, conducted by ADM.
Okay.
And it was, it was, but they hired a, they hired a, uh, independent traffic engineering consulting firm, and we reviewed the, both the inputs and the outcomes with the traffic engineering consulting firm, and we concurred with them.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, comments from council? Which end, where should we start? You want to start over on the north and south? You want to start, Skip?
Of all the luck, we had a meeting this morning here at City Hall at 7:30. I was, took a trip down Walnut to check something out, and shortly before 7:00, the rail lines were blocked, and I took the alternate route, as those of you in the fairgrounds know what it is. You start fishing through the neighborhood, and you make it to Grand, and you make it to Hubble, and you eventually end up on University. So, um, I think the timing on that train was horrible. And, uh, I will say, there were a lot of cars stopped. These are blue-class peop, blue-collar people that are trying to make it to work, and, uh, here they are waiting on a train and then trying to negotiate through a neighborhood. Um, there's a, there's a huge, uh, safety issue here that we're talking about, and we haven't touched on that. Um, I heard very little discussion on Southeast 34th, which I'm surprised at, because that's a major impact in that area. I heard you, but that was...
I didn't finish.
Oh, sorry. Um, I have seen nothing from the UP except being adversarial out of this, and, um, also feels though our staff, and I told you this earlier today, I think we were out negotiated. And, you know, when we're negotiating contracts with our employees, we hire professional negotiators. I think maybe we should have done that this time. What really strikes me is that the people that are impacted by this the most, the people live on the east side, they're opposed to it. We hear a lot of other speakers that, some of them admittedly don't even live on the east side. They don't live in Des Moines, and they're up there for it. And I think that when it comes down to it, um, Cherie had said it months ago, and she's absolutely right, the residents own these crossings. Don't give them up without something in return. And, believe me, folks, w- once this is given up, it's permanent. There were, I don't know if the railroads ever come back saying, oh, you can have your crossing back, so, um, that's what I've got to say on it.
Well, I want to thank everybody for being here and for the efforts they put in, and Cherie especially for the time that she spent on this. Um, however, I, I look at it, at those who live there, this is going to be a, a minor adjustment, because as you go to the tracks, as you go now, and you have a train blocking, you already have a plan in mind, it's how you get around this. And so you, you know how to operate on the east side because you've had the trains there for a long time. And, uh, I think also that, um, as far as I look at train crossings, they're all a safety issue. You can see so far this year, what, we have five people killed in the state of Iowa on a crossing accident, and I don't think that, uh, I think the, the best thing we can do is, uh, to make it more safe, is close all the intersection or, uh, train crossings that we don't actually need. is close all the intersection or train crossings that we don't actually need. I know some of those you have to have totally to make things, especially in the urban areas. And as has been pointed out, trains carry a lot more freight than what the trucks do. Trains can carry up to much as 6,000 of what the over-the-road semis can carry. Look at the emissions that those trucks are putting out from burning their fuel. And trains use a lot less fuel than what the trucks do. And that the situation we have with the federal government with highway repairs, they've cut back on the funds that's available to maintain the roads. And what damages the roads? The semis are what's damaging the roads. And as we go forward, there's going to be less and less dollars available for road repairs. And that's, and we talk about emissions. You know, we talk about our environment, how we want to protect our environment, and all the emissions that come off of these semis is very detrimental to our environment. So we need to keep all these things in mind. And as has been spoken to as far as the economic impact, as far as what our city is, and somebody said they didn't put, the railroads don't put anything in, look at the salaries that they pay and how much their investment's been into the properties that they have and what the tax base is that they have for our city. You know, if this million dollars is not paid by them, who's going to pick this up to provide the services and that that we expect there in our city? If the capacities are at the extreme and we can't bring in, I think it was Mr. Swayze who said that he's had businesses asking about opportunities to come to the city of Des Moines, and they need rail. And if we don't have this rail available to them, you know, they have no choice but to go somewhere where the rail is available. So I think we all need to look at all the aspects of this and not just that it's going to be an inconvenience to us on the east side, but how it's going to affect our city and our estate as a whole. So my comment.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you all for coming down and speaking. It always gives me a lot of pride to know that people care about their neighborhoods and want the best for our city. We don't always agree on everything, but it is impressive, and I appreciate the time that you've given this issue. I want to tell you just a couple of things from my perspective. I think that good things have been said already, and I want to just add to it. A couple of people mentioned the fact that we've, you know, talked about this at the council chambers before, and I think all of us have had a, you know, a list of things that concerned us and things that we wanted to look at. And when we met a couple of months ago and we talked about this, there were certain things that I said that I wanted to learn more about and to know more about. Here's that list. I wanted to know more about Garten School and where those kids come from, and we've been assured that this isn't going to create a problem for people that live west of the railroad tracks that need to go to Garten going east. That was a big concern of mine. I wanted to see an actual traffic study, and I think the manager and people will say that I pushed pretty hard to get that computerized full traffic study so that we can take a look at that and see what impact it would have on alternative routes. And I'm comfortable with what it does at Guthrie, Euclid, and the other major streets in the area. I am, have been, and will be real interested in a viaduct somewhere as an alternative route. But being able to promise that right now is not in the city budget. I think it's not hollow words we're saying. In fact, several of us have discussed several times, including Mayor County and Bob Mahaffey, there was a federal grant application that we hoped we might be able to have the match money and that a project would qualify. And in the last month, we thought hard about submitting, but our application would not have been qualified for a viaduct somewhere on the east side. It's a tiger grant fund, if you follow what the federal DOT does, and I hope that kind of opportunity comes along again. I'm, I've been worried and interested in the landscape and the traffic improvements on the streets around there. If we're going to have a closed road now, I want to make sure that traffic signals and directions are really clear to people that live in the area and visit the area. And I wanted many more specifics on what the railroad was going to do to improve their area and to improve the condition of the railroad to make sure that it really did have a benefit for the citizens of Des Moines, that traffic would be closed less, that they'd actually do the improvements to bring technology to their routes and so forth. And I'm satisfied with that, manager. I will say that this is only the first, only the first reading, but I would like more and more specifics and a stronger commitment on some of those roadway improvements. For instance, I don't see strong enough language about how we would treat and work the alternative road that should be built at East 34th, the East 36th. And so I just ask you to continue to take a look at that. And the last thing that I want to say in regard to my list was economic development. I said this last time, and I'll continue to say it. I'm really happy that UP has routes going through Des Moines, but their economic well-being is not what concerns me. It's the jobs, and it's the local businesses that pay property taxes and employ people to do. And I ask for a lot of information on the economic, and we saw that study today. I know all of us care deeply about that. I'm really impressed by the number of jobs at the companies that we talk to. We know there's hundreds of companies in this corridor. Our staff was able to talk to 20 of them and get detailed information. Those companies have 3,400 employees. They pay almost $3 million in property taxes every year that funds firefighters. They're largely growing, and that's a good thing for our economy. And those jobs are vitally important for the neighborhood that surrounds this area and for the city in general. I've been a little taken back, and I'm very happy and proud to work with our friends in Eastern Polk County. And I couldn't be happier that Facebook is coming to the central Iowa area. But compare those two projects. Facebook, for its economic impact on the city of Des Moines and the region, has been in the newspaper and had headlines every week for weeks and weeks, and sometimes it's been daily. They're getting $18 million of state funds. They're not going to pay any property taxes for 20 years. They think they're going to bring 31 jobs. The rail over here in terms of economic development is no local taxes. No property taxes or local taxes are we providing as an incentive to get this done. They have dozens of diverse employees that provide a range of different kinds of employment opportunities for all kinds of citizens of our city. The total 3,400 jobs, not 31, 3,400 jobs, and they pay, as I said before, about $3 million in property taxes. This is an area that the economic development isn't about a handout to UP or some railroad headquartered somewhere else. It's about making sure that we have good jobs in Des Moines, and I think I have no choice because I want a strong future for everybody in Des Moines to support this. And the last thing that I'd say is, I hate this east versus west mentality. I know some of us are burdened by the fact that right now we live on the west side. All of us love the east side. And if you could have been here this morning at 7:30 to watch our workshop, you would have seen a litany, one after another, of projects that this city council is investing in on the east side of Des Moines to improve the neighborhoods, to improve your property values. There are things all over that total tens of millions of dollars that are under construction today, and I'm very proud of that. And I don't think any of us, we can disagree respectfully, and we can come to a different conclusion on this, but please don't say that it's because we somehow think less of you or less of your part of town. I love the east side, and I want the best for it, and I hope that years from now, we're proven right, that these jobs grow, more people have employment, and it's a strong, great, vibrant area. I'm going to support it tonight.
You know, I'm going to, you did an awesome job of summing that up. And I had written notes here, and I think probably nine out of my 10 words here echo exactly what you were talking about. We have to stop and think about the city overall as a whole. And the city of Des Moines has done such a phenomenal job of actually making significant changes, and we have grown and moved so far beyond. You know, I personally look back to when I was first elected to the city council, and I would have never dreamed that the city is where it's at today. But it's because we have had to make difficult decisions and not decisions that everybody has always agreed with. And I see this being one of those decisions. And I do, and you know, and I've seen some of the Facebook pages where, you know, Chris Hansley, where she left her roots on the east side, and where was she? She wasn't there to support us. I have worked hard to do some major projects on the east side. And, you know, no, I don't live there anymore, but it's where I grew up. I grew up over on East 14th and Milton, and I have as much vested interest, I have my mother calling me on this project on Hall Avenue and explaining to her why we need to do this. It is about economic development. It is about jobs, and we have to make decisions that not everybody's happy with. But I really feel confident, there has been a tremendous amount of time that has gone into this process, a huge amount of time for, so, and I wasn't in the first meetings. I came in towards the end. But I know the amount of work and effort that so many people have put into this. I know every time there's a meeting, there are additional issues that are raised, that the staff goes out and works to get additional information to try and answer those questions to the best of their ability. And they're looking at it, trying to look at it to see what's in the best interest of the city. And I feel confident that the recommendation, it may not be 100% perfect, but I feel that the recommendation and where they started out from where they are today is very, very good. Does it mean that we're not closing the streets? No. But it means that we, as a city, will continue to be able to focus on increasing manufacturing and working to attract and retain those businesses that any city in the state within the country would give their right arm to be able to have those businesses come into their community. So I'm supportive of the project. I would like to echo what Councilmember Coleman said. I do need to just emphasize this, because we, as a council, working with the staff, work very, very hard to be equitable in the distribution of dollars and funds that are spent in this community on projects. And I can assure you, there is no less attention given to the east side than there is the west side. Thank you. You know what? You're out of order.
I'll run the meeting, Ms. Hansley. Brian?
It's very simple metrics that I kind of take a different look at it. On the one hand, I agree that the future of moving goods, of moving goods is railroad, okay? That's just the future. It's cheap. It's inexpensive. The problem is, is that this proposal does not even remotely address the long-term issues that we're going to be dealing with. So I agree 100% that the future of moving goods in the city is by railroad. When we do these patchwork solutions, like what is proposed here, trains are only going to get longer, delays are going to be longer, and we're going to be back in the same situation in five years that we are now. The only solution is a permanent solution with the viaduct. So again, from day one, I've been a no. I'm still a no. So that's my position.
I guess I'd like to make one comment.
Go ahead.
Skip and I have worked with the city manager for a viaduct over Dean Avenue aspect, I don't know, for a number of years. But the mayor or the city manager has guaranteed us that he's continued to look for money, see if there's some way that we might be able to address that. I think that's the most important area for a viaduct, to be on Dean, because it, you know, all the traffic and that we have. If you have another viaduct other than the one at Guthrie, people have, and it's spread out far enough that it can be utilized by a lot of people. Secondly, I think we've had at least five meetings on this, and I don't know, anybody else have a calendar that would relate to that. But I did talk to one of the school board members today, Chris, and said that the people living west of the tracks goes to Cattell, is in the Cattell District, and east the track is in the Garten District.
Thanks. Anybody else? Is, somebody's framing a motion here. I've been to neighborhood meetings all over the east side. I have known many of you for a lot of years. I listened to Marty make a couple of points that I think are very important. You know, how will this impact the east side? How will these changes, whether it's on the rail side or it's on the citizen's side, how will it change anything? How will it make it easier to move around? How will it increase the flow for the UP? I've heard Cherie talk about all of us working together and how we try to find some sort of a solution jointly that improves the circumstance. And I'm thinking in my mind, it's a circumstance for everybody. It's a circumstance for the businesses in the business parks. It's a circumstance certainly for the citizens. And I'm not quite sure we've gotten as far as I would like to see. We've had great conversation, and I appreciate the UP's coming over, and I hope that we can do it. My interest this evening is to see if we can't move this forward. Our next hearing on this item, because I don't think anybody's going to want to vote this thing through tonight. The next hearing is in August, is it not? Clerk, what's the date of the next hearing? You had it up a little while ago.
August 12.
It's August 12. I'm hopeful that between now and August 12, we can have a reasonable discussion about, somebody explain to me how anything is going to improve. The blockage is, was brought up earlier before on Grand, on Dean, on Walnut, on 34th, on 36th, and on Hall. How is this whole system going to improve setting up a train, makeup, as I understand is what it is, and how we put a train together? How is any of this going to speed that up so it reduces the blockage? How are we going to address the issues that Cherie's brought up time and time again regarding improving what we'll call sort of a brownfield area around the residences over there? I want to see a more comprehensive plan. I'd like to see staff look at it, and what about that linear park that runs along there that is a good block as opposed to just a fence someplace? And I know that that wasn't the point. As Skip pointed out earlier, we had a, it's a short-term solution, and long-term, we're hopeful that we're going to get a much better solution, especially as it regards the four-wheelers and everybody else in the parks. But this is a separate issue. I want to figure out how it is that we're all going to come together and get a win-win solution for the residents, for the businesses. And the businesses succeed if their people that work there are happy and can get to and from work as well. But in the meantime, I'd like to see some more work be done. I agree with everybody, the employment over there, those 3,400 people, there are towns that are dying to have 3,400 employees that work for companies that need this kind of service. They're dying to have that $247 million worth of tax base. They're dying to do a lot of this other stuff. But let's look at it from a 21st century position. How do we improve it all for everybody, all those interested? Does it end up having to be a long-term plan for one or two overpasses? What is it that we can do? We ought to be able to go up to those people under the dome over there behind us and say, you wish you had 3,400 employees, not 31, that you're going to give a whole bunch of money to. And let's figure out how we make a win-win solution, improve the quality of life for everybody in Des Moines, improve the opportunities for the businesses so that they can hire some more people moving forward. But let's have it be a clean environment, a good environment, and something where everybody feels like, hey, we've made some progress, we are getting there, we are working together like we never have before. I have listened to what Mr. Coleman... I have listened to what Mr. Coleman had to say. I feel much the same way. I got to admit to everybody here, I went to Roosevelt. But you know what? I've got a lot of friends who went to east. I went to Iowa State with some east high guys. And we're still back here in Des Moines, and we're trying to make some progress. And let's keep working together, but let's try to come up with a little better solution. And I will ask the, the city manager and the staff, we're not done here. This is not the final solution that I'm going to vote for. I'm going to vote for this tonight to move it forward, but I want to see improvement. I want to see more of a win-win, because when it comes to the final vote on this thing, if we don't see some significant improvement, at least my vote's not going to be there. Tonight, I'm going to vote to move it forward. Somebody can put together some sort of a motion?
I'll move, what number is it?
44.
44.
It's item 44. Before we put up the vote here, I want everybody to know that we need to emphasize for everybody, because we want to have some more meetings, some more get-togethers, but we're going to, our next scheduled hearing on this is August 12th, and then following that is September 23rd, respectively, on finalization of any agreements here. So we want your input, we want constructive input. This isn't working against the businesses, and hopefully the businesses aren't working against the residents. This is all of us working together to try to end up with a good outcome that makes Des Moines a better place, not only for ourselves. But I see some young people in, in the audience. We want our kids and our grandkids and our great-grandkids to be proud of the work that we're going to do. This isn't a one-night solution, and I don't think we've seen the, everything in front of us yet. It's been moved. Go ahead.
I guess, two no.
All right. Thank you all for coming down. Stay engaged, and let's keep the businesses engaged. And I would like to have further input from both the representatives, from the businesses and the rail. Let's, let's keep working, we can make this better. As they move out, our next item is item 45 on the vacation of segments of the street right away adjoining Southwest 17th Street between Amos Avenue and Hayman's Avenue, Hayman's Avenue. First consideration, the ordinance above. Final consideration, waivers requested by the city engineer, and it's going to require six votes.
I'll move 45, A and B.
Anybody here like to speak to item 45? We'd ask everybody that is not going to be listening or voting on item 46, if you have further discussions you'd like to have, we'd like to have you have them out in the great hall.
Sorry.
Seven yes.
Item 46, on the conveyance of the vacated north-south 17th Street right away adjoining 1702 Kiesakwa Way to Spectrum Resource Program, $2,165. Council Communication Number 13-281. Anybody here to speak on this vacation?
I'll move 46.
Then move.
Seven yes.
Item 47, on the vacation of portions of Walnut, 7th and 8 Streets, right away adjoining the Yonkers Building, I thought this was pulled.
This has been withdrawn.
All right.
Continued, I should say. I'll move 47 to continue.
Okay, and so this is to continue to June 24 at 5:00 PM. The information I got earlier was that this had been pulled. Anybody here to speak about that continuance?
Is the plan that they don't have all of their package in place at that time? Is that?
I believe so, Mrs. Hensley, yes.
Okay. Seven yes.
Item 48, on the vacation conveyance of easement for the use of airspace over a segment of 8th Street between Park Street and Pleasant Street to Principal Life Insurance Company for $6,550. Council Communication Number 13-283. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move 48, A and B.
48's been moved, A and B.
Seven yes.
49, on the vacation conveyance of a portion of Scott Avenue right away to Kemmen Holdings L.C. for $10,587. Council Communication Number 13-289. A is the first consideration, the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant, requires six votes. Again, portion of Scott Avenue to Kemmen.
I'll move 49, A and B.
Then move.
Seven yes.
Item 50, items regarding property at 3,500 Kingman Boulevard, Scott, Hartstuck, and Dennis Groenboom purchasers, and Parker Street Foundation, and Harold Wells, who is currently the owners of that property. A is amending the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land use designation from low-density residential to commercial pedestrian-oriented neighborhood node. B is adhering to rezone the property from R-160, one-family, low-density, to limited NPC, neighborhood pedestrian commercial. C is the first consideration, the ordinance above. D is the final consideration, the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Yes. Would you like to speak to this item?
Yes.
Come ahead.
I'm Scott Hartstuck, one of the applicants. Address is 1134 38th Street. We live, excuse me, we live five blocks from the Throw Center. This is the Throw Center at 3,500 Kingman. For the last 35 years, it has been a community event center, very important to the Drake Neighborhood, where our neighbors hold their wedding receptions, retirements, birthday parties, graduations. We told Harold Wells, the former owner of the property, that if they ever wanted to sell this property, to let us know, because we think it is very important to the neighborhood, and we wanted to continue having this center in our neighborhood. Harold's now in a nursing home, he needed to sell it. We're still interested in continuing this as an event center for our neighbors. The Drake Neighborhood is fully in support of this. The Drake Neighborhood Association is fully in support of our application. We worked with the, we came to the city to make sure that we could use this for this purpose, and it turned out that the zoning on the property is R-1, single-family residential. So we were told that we would need to get it rezoned to the neighborhood pedestrian commercial. So we worked with the city staff. Staff came up with 12 conditions to approve the rezoning. We are in full agreement with the staff on each one of those conditions. When the matter went to the Plan and Zone Commission, the Plan and Zone Commission thought there should be a little more buffering between our property, the Throw Center, and the first house to the west. So they, the staff came up with a 13th condition, and that condition says that the buffer on the west property line shall be provided, as deemed suitable, by the applicant, the neighbor, and the staff. And we're really concerned with that condition, because it would allow the neighbor, basically, to block the entire rezoning, because if they don't agree to anything other than, you know, let's say a 50-foot brick wall, then that condition would never be agreed to. But even, even if we could come up, we don't think that there's any need for a buffer. I think this maybe actually shows up on your screen. You'll see, this is the Throw Center in the middle of the property. The neighbor to the west owns this house here. And you'll see there are lots of trees and things between the two properties. I actually counted them this morning when I was out for a walk. There are actually 25 trees along that west property line, along with some bushes, along with the neighbor's 6-foot wooden fence that separates our rear yard from their rear yard. So we don't think a buffer is needed, but if it is, if you think a buffer is needed, we think that condition should be changed so that the buffer would be subject to the determination that the staff would make as to whether it's suitable or not. We don't think we or the neighbors should have to agree to what type of buffer is suitable. So we are requesting that the ordinance be approved without that 13th condition, or at least that the condition be changed.
Scott, question. Couple of questions. Let me go back, and you're giving the history of the Throw Center, but to be perfectly clear, it had been used for all of the same types of activities that you're proposing to use it for now, even though it was not zoned properly.
That is correct.
And, and that had been on it for decades, really?
Since 1979, it's been used like this.
It had been used for that, and it was just one of those things that everybody probably just assumed it was, had the proper zoning.
Right.
Now, when I was out there too, and looking at the fence, the fence just covers the, the backyards of the two adjoining properties.
Right.
If there was, and I understand that you would prefer that that condition not be there, but at a minimum, it seems like it might be reasonable to just put, extend the fence to the, the same type of fence to the, cover the rest of the lot line up to a certain point. I mean, that, to me, would be the most reasonable if, if we had to go that direction.
Right. When, when the staff was first looking at this, they initially had, condition eight talks about a six-foot tall fence along the rear property line. The staff originally had written that condition as being a fence along that entire west property line. And, you know, I talked to them, and I said, you know, I personally think fences, wooden fences are kind of ugly. And I didn't know if the neighbors wanted a wooden fence along that property line. If they had of, I assume they probably would have built it all along the property line. So the staff then changed that condition to just say that the existing fence had to be there.
Okay, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Don't go too far away. Come ahead.
Hi, I'm Alicia Knapp. I live at 3,518 Kingman Boulevard, which is the residence directly adjacent to the Throw Center. So we're the ones with the apparently ugly fence. We've lived there for four years. Before that, we lived just around the corner, and we really tried to stay in the neighborhood because we love it there. So we've lived in the neighborhood for 10, 12 years now, and we have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. And so our primary concern is keeping our kids safe. We have, over the last four years, experienced all the events that I'm sure that many of you have, have probably gone to over the years at the Throw Center. We've attended events there as well. But being the neighbors directly next door, we wanted to make sure you're aware of the impacts that we see of having these sorts of events going on, and, and wanted to make sure that there are appropriate considerations taken for us, for our kids, for the other neighborhood kids, to keep them safe, and really keep it a nice neighborhood. I get a lot of comments from people who live elsewhere who just love the area, and we do too, obviously. But first and foremost, it needs to be a safe place to raise your kids. So, let's see, our first, our first issue is serving alcohol at the Throw Center. As you've just heard, there, it was never zoned appropriately for the events that have gone on there. We're well aware of that. We, we were made aware of that two years ago, when there was an incident, you know, a party was ending, finishing up, people were drunk, they started to fight behind the Throw Center, and there were gunshots fired. We called the police. The police came, but after the gunshots were fired, everybody kind of dispersed, and by the time the police got there, the crowd was gone. The next morning, we called the zoning commission, and they said, you know, it's not zoned for that. I've, you know, we didn't know it was being used like that, and that was where it ended. So we were not surprised when we heard from the, the potential buyers that they are having a zoning issue, and the zoning needed to be changed. So alcohol is our very first concern. There's no accountability whatsoever there right now. They're not proposing, the potential buyers aren't proposing any additional accountability. So, you know, there's no, you don't have to be licensed to bring and serve alcohol there, there's no security. The impacts to us aren't mitigated with just a barrier between the two properties, or 23 fences, which, by the way, that's an aerial shot, it doesn't look like that from the ground, because you see the trunks, and they don't block as much. So what, the impacts that we see are fights, and I mentioned the, the shooting, generally disorderly conduct, what happens when people leave a place after they've been partying and drinking, we're all aware, and an unsafe atmosphere for us and for our kids. What we request is that there is a condition, that they have to have an off-duty police officer there if they're going to serve alcohol, that if they're going to, if they're going to have a party with, you know, a significant number of people, 20 people and serve alcohol, have a licensed server or caterer or something like that, have some accountability, because this isn't just getting together with your friends. They have large parties there that do get out of control, and there's no accountability whatsoever. Secondly, hours of operation, this is another thing that, you know, a fence, when there's a party that's wrapping up at midnight, people are drunk and coming outside yelling and doing whatever they do. Our kids sleep on the second floor, we sleep on the second floor. Unless you're going to put up a fence that's as tall as our house, that's not going to make any difference. It's not going to block the noise, you know, the, I don't need to say anymore about that. Our request there is limit the events to a certain time in the evening. On the weekdays, we propose 8:00 PM. On the weekends, Friday and Saturday, we propose 11:00 PM, which we think is more than reasonable, considering we didn't buy a house next to a bar. The next item is limit the, the event size and frequency. There's currently no limit, there's, there's, like I said, no accountability. This is, these are things that, again, a fence doesn't mitigate. We've had people, you know, when people get drunk and come outside and need to go to the bathroom, sometimes they use our yard. This is not acceptable. This is, you need to have some more control over these events. And we've heard that the potential buyers intend to unlock the door and come back and lock it at the end of the event. I don't know who's going to make people leave if they get out of control, but it's not something we should have to deal with. Our request there is, you know, a reasonable cap on the amount of events they can have each month or annually. And then, you know, if there are exceptions to that, which I believe with the current zoning, they could apply for a permit, I have just like another minute, they could apply for a permit for an event, and, you know, there, it would be taken into account, they could get the permit, they could not get the permit. That's what I would propose, a cap, if they want to go over the cap, you know, you all would be aware that it's being used as a party house, you know, five days a week. The, the general aesthetic impacts, which are not mitigated by the 20-whatever fences, or 20-whatever trees between our properties, they've had a porta-potty in there every day all weekend long, since they've been managing the property for the last couple months. They, over Memorial Day weekend, they brought it in on Thursday, it didn't go out until Monday. That's entirely inappropriate, unsanitary, unsightly, has no place in our neighborhood. Garbage, they, they have garbage overflowing, the, the container space that they have, they should be required to keep their garbage containerized in the city, in the city containers. If they can't, it's a sign, if they need a porta-potty and there's trash all over the place, it's a sign that the facility isn't being used as, you know, this quote-unquote Drake Neighborhood, Good Neighbor facility that it's portrayed to be. And then lastly, parking, I don't know what their plans are for parking, I don't believe there are any, but the street gets very congested and people block our driveway, so there need to be considerations for that as well, would be our proposal. And just in closing, I would say, during the zoning meeting, one of the commissioners said that we had to allow things like this in order for our city to avoid becoming a bedroom community like West Des Moines. In this specific case, I don't agree with that. Generally speaking, I think you do need to have some diversity in the neighborhood. Generally speaking, I think you do need to have some diversity in the neighborhood, and that's one thing that's great about Des Moines. But we have to make sure that these things are done in a way that keeps our families safe, or else all you end up with in Des Moines is people who don't, aren't raising kids, and people who aren't focused on keeping their kids safe. We don't want to scare people away because, you know, it's, it's a very nice house, and there's gunshots and parties next door and things like that. So, I think that we need to find a balance here, and with some of these conditions, certainly the condition for a barrier, but additional considerations need to be taken for impacts that aren't mitigated with a fence or, or something that's prettier. And then, you know, I don't know what happens if they should decide to sell the property, but with changing the zoning the way they have, this neighborhood pedestrian commercial really contemplates commercial and retail facilities. And if they decide to sell the place, and we've opened it up to a wide array of things that can go in there, I'm also concerned with what that may do to the neighborhood. So, we're not just talking about this event center. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Yes?
Go ahead.
A couple of questions. Now, were you at both the plan and zoning meeting? I take it you were at plan and zoning?
My husband was. I was out of town for work.
Okay. And were you at the Drake Neighborhood meeting when they had the discussion?
My husband was. I was out of town for work.
Okay. So, you made the similar type of plea at the, at both of those meetings? Because recommendations, Drake Neighborhood is in support, and P&amp;Z is in support.
I understand, yes. I, I do understand that. I don't know how they came up with the barrier as the only condition. That to me sounded pretty silly after the fact, given my husband Eric wrote a letter to the zoning commission to let them know of all these things that were our concerns, which were really focused on our kids and this, this barrier, so we don't have to look at it really, it doesn't take that into account. So, yes, we did attend the meeting. We've met with the proposed buyers and discussed these concerns with them. We haven't heard any real solutions to any of these concerns. And then Eric wrote a letter as well to the zoning commission prior to the zoning hearing and was there in person.
And I guess just going back.
Have you read the 13 conditions that are there? Because they cover a lot of what you're talking about. You're very eloquent in, in, in the way you've stated your position, and I would have similar concerns, but an awful lot of them are covered by what's here?
If they're all covered, that's great. I, I.
I'm not sure they all are. That's why I wondered if you'd read them.
No, I haven't seen the conditions. I only saw the additional condition that was added on at the end.
Number 13?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to step up and make a comment?
My name's Eric Knapp. I'm Alicia's husband. We live, obviously, next door. One other, I guess, point I'd like to make that Alicia didn't was, although this has been used since the late 70s in similar fashions, for approximately the last 20 years, there's also been habitational occupancy in this location. So, the revenue generating from this property hasn't been exclusively from an event center. So, if we, I guess, put some legitimacy around this event center usage, that frequency of usage is going to increase because there's no longer habitational usage. So, and the last owner didn't have a mortgage, whereas the new owners, I assume, will, their need to, you know, occupy the space for these events, you know, is going to need to increase in order to make, you know, enough money to cover their costs. So, we see these incidences that we've outlined as only increasing or getting worse as, you know, the intended uses of it is going to change. And when we say it's been used this way for 30 years, it's not five or seven days a week. It might be once a week, maybe it may go two weeks without, three weeks without anything. Then it might go Saturday and Sunday night, or Friday and Saturday, or a night or two during the week. But when you take away that habitational use and replace it exclusively as a, you know, a real small-scale valet or ballroom, these, these things are only going to multiply. So, we've lived in, we're Roosevelt grads as well, so we're real familiar with the neighborhood. And, and again, we've attended some functions there as well. But it's not an apples-for-apples comparison as to how it's been used in the past. So, I just wanted to make sure that that element is taken into consideration, that that habitational use allowed the prior owner to generate some income off of the property without, there was no need or obligation for him to have these events. It was just something that, you know, as a well-known neighbor or, or community figure, he allowed neighbors to use this. And it's not just neighbors. It's, there's no stipulation on people from this neighborhood or that neighborhood can use it. It's from any neighborhood. Most of the time, you know, the parties I see are not anyone I recognize from the neighborhood. So, as far as keeping our neighbor, our neighborhood clean and our kids safe, they don't, most strangers don't have that in the back of their minds as they're there for parties. And, and when I say parties, it's about any kind of party you can imagine, so.
Can I make a suggestion? I appreciate your comments, and I know you're just reading the conditions here. This is an item that takes three readings, and I had discussed with the intended purchasers of the property that, based upon how the reading went tonight, that if there were still questions that needed to be addressed, that I would not move to do the second and third readings. And what I would propose tonight is, is that we go ahead and move the first reading, that we then sit down with staff and with you and with the owners to make sure that there's a clear understanding of the conditions, because I think a lot of them are there, but just to have some additional discussion around those. And then, when it comes back on the 24th of June, hopefully we will have addressed those satisfactorily for, for you. And at that point, then we'll make a decision as to whether or not we waive the third reading. Does that sound like a?
Are there any other, as far as like a license? I don't know if that's a licensed caterer or a license, someone licensed serve alcohol. Is that on one of those 12 agenda items, or can that be part of?
You know, what I would suggest is, is that we sit down with the city staff, Mike Ludwig.
But the answer to your question is yes. It requires a licensed caterer and somebody to get a.
It doesn't require it. It says they may. It says caterers, residents, renters, and guests may serve and consume alcoholic liquor wine.
But, but they have to meet the city ordinance.
Right.
And so, if they do, they've got to come to us to get a, an alcohol.
Yeah, I, I.
Is that right, Mike?
Is that for each event, or is that?
Yes.
Because we were under the impression that would be just like you would at your own home. It'd be enforced just as if you were having parties at your own home. If there's an issue, the, you know, police could be involved, but.
We've got staff.
Michael Ludwig, planning administrator, mayor and members of the council. The condition would allow a person hosting an event at the facility to bring their own beer or wine to the facility. Does not require a caterer's license. That condition, or a condition such as that, was discussed at the planning commission as we were debating this, and the commission did not elect to recommend an additional condition such as that. But I think you may be aware that any conditions that the council would desire on the property has been agreed, has to be agreed to in writing by the applicant prior to the close of the hearing this evening, so.
Well, exactly. But I'm a little interested, because I think the intent here is to, to do the right thing and continue the same kind of a use it was before, and hopefully, given your input, maybe kind of have a little more supervision on it. But in the meantime, I'm, I am a little concerned that, you know, we give them a, a NPC kind of a, of a opportunity, and they don't have any restrictions, and somebody just rents the place and comes in and can, you know, I don't know, for support for the whatever organization, you know, comes in and, and has a full catered deal with alcohol and everything else. It, now, I mean, it's a business. It's not a, a residence anymore. It's a different deal, and we're not going to have any oversight over that?
I believe it was described at the planning commission meeting that that is essentially how it's been operating. People who are renting the facility could bring and serve their own alcohol at, at the events at, at the facility without being a caterer. They were essentially taking that liability on their, on their own of serving alcohol to the individuals attending, just as you would at your own house if you had people to your, to your home.
Well, but you're asking for a commercial zoning here.
Well, the zoning versus the liquor license is, is two different issues, but the, the questions I heard this evening were about use of the property. The conditions that were recommended by staff and the planning commission, limit the use of the facility to R160 uses, office space, and this event center. So, all of the additional uses that are allowed in the NPC Commercial District are specifically excluded in this rezoning. So, the real question is whether or not holding an event center that can be leased out, a space for events, would require a liquor license of the facility. And we were told it would not, that the individuals who are leasing the facility could assume the risk or assume the liability and choose to, what was described, say that someone had a retirement party at this. Person who's retiring could, could bring a case of wine and serve wine to his guests at, at the party. Would not require a liquor license to do so. They're taking personal liability for doing that. The planning commission did discuss the idea of whether or not they should require a caterer at the events to serve alcohol, whereby that caterer would take that liability. And as many facilities around the community that are rented out and where there's alcohol served, a caterer, individually, the property owner, requires a caterer's license to serve alcohol at that. And in many events, those facilities require, the caterer also requires an off-duty officer to be there, present, checking peoples that are leaving for their own liability protection. So, the applicant indicated at the P&amp;Z hearing, they were not interested in any conditions such as that. And the planning commission debated it and ultimately did not recommend adding anything limiting it to a caterer or having a liquor license at the facility.
Anybody have any questions?
Mike, you said, "Once we close the hearing tonight, we can't change the conditions."
No, we're not going to close the hearing.
Okay, that, that was my question, because I think there's a lot of unanswered.
Yeah.
Issues that need to be resolved, particularly with the rezoning and what that looks like. Should these folks sell the property? What conditions run with the property? Aside from the issues that they're raising specifically with this. So, I, I would like some more discussion to happen with staff and the interested parties in the interim.
Bob?
Mike, did P&amp;Z consider this as a spot zoning? It's in a residential neighborhood, and you've got one property here that.
You've got a church directly behind it, and to answer the question on parking, the church parking lot is really their source of parking.
They have an agreement?
They want to allow parking all the time. Yeah, most times on the street.
We were not specifically concerned about spot zoning on the property. I don't believe the commission expressed concern about that either.
Frank? Yeah, go ahead.
What I'm hearing here is we've got a, a young couple that's raising a family next door, and they've had issues ongoing and didn't realize until recently that there was a resolve to the problem. And they're in here looking for a resolve. I'm, I like Christine's idea. I'm in favor of passing this tonight, but not, not waiving the final readings. And I don't think that Scott and Dennis want to move in with hostile neighbors. So, I think to pass it tonight and give staff and the neighbors and the owners the chance to sit down and hammer this out and see what, what's brought back to us.
I, I don't think that we can pass it tonight. I'm going to have to ask Jeff to give us an opinion on, on that, based upon all the stuff that we're, we've heard here. Jeff?
That's correct, Mayor. The, the problem is that the, once you pass an item, the hearing is, would be in effect closed. So, my suggestion would be that you continue it and come back for, for potentially what the first, first consideration at the next meeting, or all considerations if the parties can agree on something.
Okay. And I'm comfortable with that, based upon the, the level of discussions that we're having here. So, we'll continue the hearing on this. We need to set meetings up, you know, hopefully with, yet this week, so that there can be ongoing discussions to address the issues and come to some resolution, so that hopefully we can then take action on June 24th. And again, you know, I, I'm hopeful that we can find resolution to this, but just keep in mind that there's been extensive debate through the Drake Neighborhood and P&amp;Z that I want to be sensitive to as well. Okay. Okay, so I'll move to continue the hearing, work with staff to get a meeting set up, and then come back on the 24th.
Scott, are you okay with that? Okay.
He would prefer not, but.
Yeah.
Probably.
Well, but we still have this item 13 that.
Yeah. No, I understand.
So, we've got to, we've got to get to that as well, so.
That was yours? Who gave it?
Did you call me?
Seven, yes?
All right. Item 51, on the downtown bicycle plan implementation, Phase 1 Resolution, approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as Quality Striping Inc., doing business as DPLM Inc. Jamie Jurek, president, $279,902.60. Council Communication number 13-276, A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to that item? Right. Do we have a motion? Christine, do you want to move this?
Move, yep. Sorry. Absolutely. Some to be done by, right, Brian? Hopefully.
Seven, yes?
We're still pushing.
Your expectations, I think, are, are more than some others. Okay. 52, on the Greenwood Pond Detention Basin Repairs Resolution, approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as J&amp;K Contracting LLC. Jeremy Feldman, president, $314,397.80. Council Communication number 13-278, A is approving the contract, the bond, permission to sublet. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I'll move 52.
Counsel? Been moved?
We met with the Neighborhood Association on that a couple of weeks ago.
Seven, yes?
Where is this on the, just an update on the plans in terms, this is like Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3? Ben, can you give us a quick update? I don't want to keep us here too long tonight, but.
Mayor County, members of the Des Moines City Council, Ben Page, Parks Recreation Director. This is what we probably would call Phase 1. We're going to fix the drainage issues around the pond, make sure that no more siltation happens into the pond. Once we correct that, we would like to go in and look for additional grant resources to dredge the pond. But right now, those have not been identified.
Don't we have a number of other parks also that have a whole series of things to be done? I think Union Park had some stuff that needed to be done, and.
We have approximately 25 master plans right now through 25 different parks of our 76 that we are working on. Some go back to 1998, all the way up to 2006, and some are substantially completed and some are not substantially completed. So, yes, we have a lot of need and a lot of projects.
Okay. All right. We're on to 53. On the Southeast Connector paving, Southeast 15th Street to Southeast 30th Street, Resolution, approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as JC Moynha, Moynha &amp; Sons Inc. John P. Moynha, president, $31,166,419.37. Council Communication number 13-280, A is approving the contract, the bond, permission to sublet. And B, is approving a supplemental agreement, number one, to the professional services agreement with Kirkham, Michael, and Associates to provide construction phase services for the Southeast Connector paving, Southeast 15th to Southeast 30th Street, not to exceed $2,574,335. Council Communication number 13-290. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? This is a big item. It's certainly important to the completion of this Southeast Connector, or at least moving towards it. Anybody here to comment on that? And if they're not, I've got a couple of questions. Any of the council have any? Skip?
Well, first of all, I think we missed thanking somebody this morning, and that was the MPO, in their wisdom and in the leaders, the leadership there. They have seen to it that this project is a priority, and I would like to stress the fact that last year, on the partnership trip, our council members that attended that, that trip to DC brought back a significant amount of money at a later date for this project. And I think that we're all to be congratulated for that. As you've all seen, I asked a, a question on a, a local incentive, and I would like to ask legal to verify that, that incentive that we offer is the same as a local preference. We don't need an answer tonight. We're running late. But if you would look into that, because it's hard to believe. But if you would look into that, because it's hard to believe that, because it's a federal project, they would take that away. I'm going to, I'm going to support this, but looking through this contract, I have found some issues in here that really stand out. And I'm just going to read one, in which the people that we're going to approve tonight bid $120,000 on an item, the next lowest bidder bid $474,000 on the same item, a difference of $354,000. And I find that throughout this entire document. There's a few where they bid a little higher, but nothing like this. And I'm hoping that staff will really keep their eye on this. I'm suspicious that we're going to see some rather large change orders come back out of this. Change orders are change orders, and we know they run into issues where they've got to do them. But when I see disparities like this in the bidding process, I think we really need to keep our eye on it.
Frank?
Yep. Mike?
I'll move it here in a moment, but I agree with Skip, and I wanted to, to back him up on this, because having looked at the, the, how close the bids were to a local contractor in town, and the amounts that were off substantially, which would require a change order, I think I'd like to back up Skip on this and say that we'll be watching very closely to see what those change orders are and how it would affect this person's future bids. So I'll move 50, what are we on, 54? 53, A and B.
As we're voting on it, I agree with both Skip and Brian. I, I don't want to see somebody come back to ask for an increase in a change order in moving rocks, because that's where they got the bid. Their competitor, I think that's the one we're talking about here, was $300,000 over, and have them come back and say, "Oh, there's more rocks in here than I thought there was going to be." And that's how they got the bid, is under that, and they come back and get a change order that pushes them way over what the, the other bid would be. I agree. I wish that this was a local Des Moines contractor that was doing this work. These dollars would stay in Des Moines if we had it and had, had worded it to a local contractor. I just, sometimes I think, when I see the amount of the change orders, sometimes it come through, I, I sometimes feel like we should have chosen the, the second best one after we reviewed all the, the items that they had differences of opinion in what it was going to cost, and knowing that there are some of those items tend to be hugely expensive. And when they underbid them and they come back and say, "Ah, you know, it turns out to be something different." And if it ends up being close to the price of the competitor, I hope it comes before this council, because I'm going to vote no on the change order.
One other question before we finish voting. This is a huge amount of money. I, I think in terms of construction projects, I can't think of too many that have been $31 million. Does the bond and their, their protection, our protection through them, does it increase and cover the whole scope of the project in something this large? And, you know, I, I suppose we require something, but in, in this, where it's so large, can, can you assure the council that there's a bond in place and protections?
Why don't we have Mr. Brewer comment?
Mayor, Members of Council, Jeb Brewer, City Engineer. Yes, that's proving the bond. The bond is subject to final legal approval. In fact, the one that you approved tonight, so they're going to have to sign off on that bond. We have the contracts now, but the final bond is still being reviewed, so it won't be actually processed until that final bond, which would cover the full amount. In a federal project, there are no maintenance bonds, just performance bond, but the performance bond would cover the work.
And, and is it public information at this point, who the bonding company is?
I could get that. I don't have it with me, but yeah. I mean, we can get that.
Most of them are done through a couple companies that we know, is, is this one?
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but it has to be approved bonding. I mean, I can get that one for you if, if you want. I don't know off the top of my head, but there's a couple-
I would like it. I would guess everybody else probably would like to see it, too.
I agree, but the bond's not going to cover a change order, right?
No.
Well, if the base contracts increase, then the bond does move the base.
I know what you're saying, though. They're, they're not going to come in and pay. You, you've made a really good point. I'm not trying to make a different-
The bond is for performance default, is what the bond is.
It's frustrating.
Right.
I'd, I'd just like to see these dollars circulating, recirculating through our, our local deal. And when you look at, at how this bid is being awarded, it, it's just, and as close as it is, it's a little painful. Ms. Manager?
Mayor and council members, I completely understand your concern about the change orders. There will undoubtedly be requests for change orders, but I think your point is to make sure that this, that change orders don't become a, a way for the contractor to make up some, some mistake they made in bidding. So we will watch that carefully, and of course, those change orders above a certain amount come before the council. I did want to say one other thing, if I could, and it's that this is, as you already noted, a very large project for the city to take on. It's particularly complex, not only for the size of it and the amount of construction activity, but the right-of-way acquisition was incredibly complex. And it is no small feat to have this item on your agenda tonight, have all the right-of-way concerns done, have the contract there. Completely aside from the issues you're talking about on the bid, I'm not debating that point particularly, but I do appreciate the extraordinary work on the part of Jeb and Pam Cooksey, I think Pam was here earlier, and their staff and others who helped, particularly Legal was heavily involved in all of the steps. I am most appreciative of that work. It is, it is just remarkable that it's happened as quickly as it has. And there is literally, figuratively, a gun to our head because of the federal dollars that are with this project. If we don't get the project going, we really frankly run the risk of losing those dollars down the line. So there was an awful lot of hard work that went into getting this item here, and I do appreciate the work that Jeb and his staff, and Jeff and his staff, and others in the organization have put forth to get it to this point.
Can I ask one other question? I know you want to move on. What is the threshold on a project like this where change orders would come back?
I think it's 15?
It's $25,000.
$25,000? Mayor, are you satisfied with that threshold, or can we set a different one for this? I mean, do we want to see more of them?
No, I think $25,000. I mean, because that's a big difference. I'm, I'm, I don't know why, I just don't want to see it, you know, like on that particular one we just talked about, try to come back with a $100,000 or $200,000 change order. I mean, that, that would be, that'd be painful.
On your bond question-
We'll see anything 25 and, and over, right?
Over. And they're also, it's Merchant's Bonding Company, I was just told, so.
Okay.
So we are familiar with them, but we'll get a copy of the bond.
We have one more exciting item on the agenda this evening, which is item 54, which is on the 2013 Park ADA Parking Lot Improvements Resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete Inc. Tony J. Vermeer, President, $416,669. Council Communication number 13-273, and A, under that, is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet.
I'll, I'll move.
Any comments? The item's been moved from the audience. Anybody want to have clarification or read the bid documents or anything?
Jeb, I've got a quick point to make. Last week, I subbed for you as Mayor Pro Tem at a, at a group. Actually, Ben Page went with me as well. And there, we ended up talking about something I would have never imagined, and this is a bunch of people that have been in the community for a long time, and they have tremendous concerns about accessibility to our parks and other places. We talked about that more than anything else. So this is a great project and important for a lot of people.
Absolutely.
And we don't want any change orders on this one either.
We wanted right the first time.
Oh, I can't believe it's over already. You took up half the time to talk.
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn as Des Moines City Council?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We sit adjourned. Thank you all for attending.